So did Tooth Fairy come see him?
He did, and he wasn't cheap. So Craig wanted to leave him a nickel. I'm like, don't leave the poor kid a nickel.
It's twenty dollars for him now.
Well, I left him two bucks, and then I wrote a note the first night, and then Craig wrote it the second night, and he picked up on the different way. Ready? He goes, the Jays are different. I'm like, I'm gonna go on that. No more notes, no more notes.
Come on, you thought any different than that?
Oh.
You didn't go missing nothing.
No, and now the limit's gotta be two bucks, or cheap.
Yeah.
All right, call this meeting at order. Roll calls going around, so anybody that has to sign in, please sign in. Motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah, one question on it. I've got Gary Hen and Jay Harris, and they were going to come last time, but they didn't, but they're here tonight, and you want to put them under old business, or?
Sure, what are?
They're for tourism grant.
Oh, the tourism grant, okay. Well, we just put them under parks and tourism then?
Okay.
And, yeah, Judy Tyson is coming.
What's the subject, please? I totally, I'm on.
Morton County Fair.
More fair, okay.
And Judy Ty is coming for the Main Street Tourism Grant Act that we tabled last time.
She's coming tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Main Street.
Main Street, and Tiffany, you have those copies, yes, okay.
I'm gonna need a couple more. I only made an eye. Does everybody want their own, or can you just look through?
No, I can share.
I usually don't. We usually don't give them to everybody, but.
Motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
So.
Second.
Two seconds.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have the minutes from Thursday, March 29th, committee meeting. Motion to approve those minutes, absent any additions or corrections?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Any comments from the floor, other than the folks that are on the agenda?
Um, I have a letter that I guess I'll send. Comments from the floor? So this is for current board members and new board members, from Tyson Manker. He sent it to my email and Todd Warwick's email on, what's that date, Greg?
Uh, April 3rd.
April 3rd. And I asked our, that was right, I believe, the day before, or the day of our board meeting in April. So I asked our attorney, I had him take a look at it, asked if I should give it out at that board meeting. He said to wait till a committee meeting to hand it out, so I did. He said that way the incoming board members could see the letter from Tyson. Tyson's asking us to take some action or start an investigation, so I'll let you guys read that.
Do you get one?
And because he's a member of the community, that's a comment from the floor.
Yeah, that was a typo with the Journal Courier, and you're welcome to make a complaint with the Illinois Board of Elections if you'd like. I don't know if there's anything the village can do, but.
Well, when I showed it to Rob, he said it was a very good question, and he said he thought that the board should discuss that. So my suggestion would be, since we have a new, three new people that will be sworn in next month to maybe talk about it next month's committee meeting, but that way you guys have the info. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but seems kind of premature to discuss it.
Committee's old meeting next month.
Right, right.
What was the typo?
It's supposed to be paid for by citizens of South Jacksonville.
Uh-huh, who did the, who did all that stuff for you?
It was us that did it.
Okay.
But it's a simple typo, so I mean, we've already contacted Illinois Board of Elections, it's no issue, so. And that would be the only one that would have any authority.
Will you fund it 100% of your campaign advertising yourself?
Yep, yep.
Tyson just wanted me to tell you guys to pay attention to his last paragraph there, and that's what he would like us to look at. So if that's all right with the rest of you, we'll just table that till next month's. And if you guys, if you know Tyson, you could reach out to him if you have any questions.
As far as that last comment, like, uh, that's been my, that's been my personal campaign committee since I ran for office in 2005. And again, that's, that's okay through the Illinois Board of Elections, so. There is no.
Yeah, he would be under comments for that part, right?
And that's, that's actually common.
Okay, I'm just saying, I told him I would hand it out, 'cause he sent it to me, and someone says to something.
And, and it should be, and it's.
And I asked our attorney, and that's what the attorney told me to do, and our attorney is Rob Cross. Yeah, and Rob asked me to hand it out, so that's what I've got.
And it should be.
And there's Judy Ty. Okay, so that's it.
Thank you.
What's that?
Um. It had been posted on there for quite a while.
I haven't gotten any minutes in a digital format. I didn't even think about it.
That's what I have to scan from here, after it's signed.
Okay.
And then you'll put them on the website?
Yeah, if you email them to me, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I'll just get them to myself, I think. She's on that thing, and I'm like, not gonna be.
Yeah, 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 I got you.
So.
This isn't my place to say it, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I really like the transparency of the Open Meetings Act, so with that being said, I feel like it should be read out loud, since I don't feel like anything should be, if it's brought up in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm happy to read it. Can I have a copy back of it written down or handed to anybody, or? I gave you guys my. I'll read it since I entered it. This was addressed to me, trustee Bellegrand Stewart and trustee elect Warwick, Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019, from Tyson Manker, Attorney at Law. With the election complete, I wanted to bring to your attention some troubling campaign ads that were distributed throughout the village. Several candidates included with their various campaign ads and mailers, the disclaimer, "Paid for by the citizens of South Jacksonville." You may have seen them. The wording of these ads.
For South Jacksonville.
This one says, "Paid for by the citizens of South Jacksonville." It's written two different ways in this letter. The wording of these ads immediately caught my attention, as they appear to indicate an official village endorsement. They also raise the question of what exactly "paid for by the citizens of South Jacksonville" means. Recall, the last administration quickly resigned to avoid criminal prosecution for mishandling of village funds and prohibited political activity. I contacted the State Board of Elections, who indicated that no campaign committee paperwork was filed for, quote, "citizens for South Jacksonville," end quote, which is only required if $5,000 is spent. Regardless of whether that amount was spent, the real question is about the name of the group itself. If a political group is purporting to represent village interests, then it should, by definition, be bipartisan and neutral about elections. Here, quote, "citizens of South Jacksonville," end quote, endorsed several candidates, which now demands investigation. I ask that you get to the bottom of this. Residents deserve honest elections, free of misleading ads and unethical tactics. Sincerely, Tyson Manker, Attorney at Law.
And the correct, the correct name is Citizens of South Jacksonville. And the, uh, "paid for by the citizens," I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was gonna say it wrong. So, since I'm reading it both ways. Citizens for South Jacksonville, I believe is the correct one.
So it was supposed to be paid for by citizens for South Jacksonville?
Yeah, not the citizens of South Jacksonville, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, citizens for South Jacksonville, yes.
Yeah, of South Jacksonville makes it sound like the village pays.
Right, yeah.
I believe that's Tyson's point.
Right, and that was only on, there was one ad that had that as the back of a sticker, that had that. Everything else was correct.
I think he, 'cause I actually talked to him, I think he was referring to mailings that went to individual homes.
All those were correct.
Um, I, he said he had a picture of one, so I'll have to ask him for a picture.
There was just one.
I didn't get a mailing, so I don't know.
Yeah, there was just one that was on the back of the sticker.
And I've, I've not seen any of these, but as a trustee, it's my responsibility to bring to you. So, it's brought.
Thank you.
But just a point of clarification, was there $5,000 spent?
No, not even anywhere close.
So, I mean, and states in here, no campaign or any paperwork was filed, dah dah dah, which is only required, only required if I was out of this pen.
Yes.
So it's a moot point anyway, is what you're saying?
That part's moot, yes. I think what I'm reading from it is that Tyson's concerned about what he considers, well, what's the last word?
Right.
Yeah.
But Tyson also, he, he put citizens for South Jacksonville, and the other thing was the citizens for South Jacksonville.
Yeah, I have no idea. I have not seen the ads.
Okay.
I'll ask him if he has a copy, if that would help you guys.
But again, not to beat a dead horse, there's nothing the village can do, anything like with election laws would have to go to the Illinois Board of Elections, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Finance?
Um, a couple things. First one is, not to kick a dead horse if we're talking about this CD. Everybody knows that First National Bank came back with a 2.25% offer for the CDs for a one-year term. I do recommend, actually, that we stick with them and do that. That would be my preference, it's up to you, of course. But with our new relationship with Prairie State Bank, I think it's a little premature to move all of our money there, especially when they're offering us a better rate. So my recommendation would be to still take the one that was part of the Prairie State proposal, which is the Jacksonville Savings Bank one, just under 100,000. Go ahead and move that to Prairie State, like, like you accepted the proposal to do. But then I would recommend leaving the others at FMB and letting them.
Roughly, what would you leave at First National?
Um, I would leave everything that's there now. We already took the tourism account, because that was part of the proposal that was accepted.
Right.
But they're willing to renew the CDs at one year. I talked to Cory today, and he said, a simple phone call, we could go ahead and close out all the CDs there tomorrow, as soon as we wanted to, and change them all immediately to start getting the 2.25 for a year.
For what period of time?
It's a one-year CD.
One year?
Yep, same as Prairie State, apples to apples, but theirs would be 2%, so.
And they're gonna give us two and a half?
2.25.
Two and a quarter.
2.25, yeah.
How about two and a half?
What can you do, Cory? So, auctioneer, Ray.
I, I mean, is everybody?
I don't see a problem.
Obviously, you don't have to listen to me, but that's what I think would be my best.
And, you know, here's, here's my opinion. I, you know, I'm not a board member yet, but, you know, and I, I know it's tax money, and we have to do the best thing that we can with this tax money, but then again, um, I don't know how I could sit up here and tell people to shop locally when we're moving our money, you know, to other banks out of town, when we have, you know, a bank that's gonna be competitive. And they use that money to build up South Jacksonville, too.
Well, you have to balance fiscal responsibility with relationship responsibility, so.
Exactly, yeah. You know, and how much, how much more are you making with the bank out of town as opposed to, you know, staying in town?
So what I'm hearing is, everybody's good with leaving the CDs at FMB and go ahead and put in that, the general consensus?
Yeah, well, I think Cory and Kai made the effort to come back and talk to us, which that's what we wanted. If we have a relationship, we need a relationship, and as Kai said, communication. I feel like that's more open now, that makes me more comfortable.
And they've both put in work on that. I've spoken with both of them several times since then.
And they're right down there.
Absolutely. And like I told them from the beginning, we never had a sour note, you know, nothing ever happened, other than John Rowan coming in and, you know, able to give us more revenue, so. Okay, so that'll be good with that. Cory, was there anything you wanted to?
I think that's it? Yeah, if you ever need anything or have a question.
Well, thank you. Next is close of fiscal year is April 30th, which some of you may not know, but some of you do know. I didn't get a chance to talk to you today, Rich, so you're hearing this with everybody else, but, everybody saw Ambulance was back in black the past month or so on the Treasury reports. Unfortunately, our next insurance disbursement comes out April 30th, so it's gonna hit ambulance fund again. We can't end the year in the red, so I'm gonna have to move money from General to Ambulance.
How much?
I don't know for sure yet. It's gonna be under 5,000. I'm thinking maybe 2,500. They've had some money come in recently, like, they're, it's better than I thought it was gonna be, honestly, but, 'cause like I said, they did get back in black, you saw, but, but with that, it's just gonna, so, just so you know, General is gonna have to move that over, 'cause we can't end the year negative. If you don't wanna keep doing that, you have options. Ambulance could become a Department of General. Like police, codes, administration, you know, like, that's always an option. Or, you know, we could talk about something else, if anybody else has a better idea.
Did the accountants give you a?
No, I haven't.
Any options?
I haven't heard, okay.
Do you know if there's a reason why it's not a part of everything else, like?
It's ki, because it's kind of an enterprise thing. It's kind of like water sewer, you know, like, because it brings revenue, so it's in the same vein as that, but at the same time, it's also a community service, so it's an allocation account in our general fund, but it's not funded by General, so.
Gary, I think it's really uncommon to have it set up that way. It's essentially set up as a money-making entity with an authority.
And it's not supposed to.
Yeah, except that it's an allocation account, and so it doesn't actually have its own bank account. It has a, but, I mean, I'm not trying to talk over everybody's head, but it's.
But in, in our logical accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
Is there any harm in it being a part of everything else?
That would be up to you. I mean, that's a board thing. It's, if you make it a Department of General, then, um.
I guess I mean, like, financially, in your world, does it matter to you?
I would have to talk with our auditors before I answered that, because I don't know what else would go into there, you know what I mean? But, just throwing that out there. I mean, there's no, I'm not saying that you have to do that by any means, but I know there's been the whole, you know, how much do we have to give ambulance now, you know? It's not really, I mean.
So it's something we can discuss in budget talks?
Yeah, I just.
Wouldn't that be a realistic time?
Absolutely. The only reason I wanted to bring this up now is because I know everybody's really watched the ambulance fund lately, and I didn't want anybody thinking, I already told her we're not giving them any more money, and here she went and did it. But I have to, because they're negative.
Well, you're, you're in a situation where you have to.
Right. So I'm just giving you a heads up.
It would be my suggestion, my, my two cents is, is fine and dandy, but when the budgets come, it's a whole new game.
So.
So, and the budgets are next month, right? Or two months, or next month, I guess.
We'll start talking budget very soon, so. Like I said, just a heads up. I didn't want anybody thinking, why'd she do that when I told her not to, so.
So you discuss the, you do the budget in the May, committee, the hall will discuss it, then it's approved in June, or how's that work?
Typically, yeah.
Try to.
Yeah, try to. We really need to. July's when appropriations.
Sometimes a budget goes over.
You really don't wanna do that, though, because your appropriations can be different, so. Was that it from finance?
Uh, the signatories?
Oh, yes, yes.
Which I can go over.
Okay, that's great.
Um, we'll have myself, Megan, and Tiffany, signatories again, of course. And then what I'd like to do is add one department head, just for the general account only, which would be either Tim or John. I don't care which one, whatever, which one, either them or whatever, everybody else cares, and then.
And Tim and I don't care either. The, the problem we have is, there's days that we need two signatures, and he's busy and gone, or Megan works out of town, and then we gotta chase all over town to try to get a signature, and it makes it really tough. It's not that either one of us want to be that, it's we need it.
And we're not asking for payroll.
Right.
You know, anything like that, just the general fund, so we can go mail stuff.
You don't want a trustee as a signature?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't done yet, and we still, and we still have a trustee as a, as a signatory, too, so.
But if I can interject, the problem with that is, we're running all over town trying to catch somebody.
No, I get that, but it's not supposed to be easy, you know, it's not.
Well, it's not supposed to be hard.
But.
That's just it, 'cause it makes it hard to do business.
But we could pick a trustee that's in town. Dick Samples is usually always available, and is he not in the building quite often? I mean, I would not be a good choice. I don't work in town. Greg doesn't work in town. He wouldn't be a good choice. So, you, you know, if you're talking about the trustees that are continuing, or we still have two more years. I, I would say Dick would be the one, because I, I get it, but I don't want it to be easy, because that's when something can happen. I feel like someone from the board's gotta be on there and be.
I, I understand that, and I shouldn't say this, but if I'm not worth, if I'm not trustee enough to have a signature, I don't need to be here.
No, I don't mean that at all, but.
That's the way I look at it.
But I don't feel like the paid employees should be in charge of all the money. We are fiscally.
She's in charge of it.
No, I know, but we're fiscally responsible, so I think somebody, a trustee. I think it's, I'm not saying anything disrespectful. I mean, it's checks and balances. That's the way I see it. There's someone from a department head. There's Tiffany, there's the mayor, there's the clerk, and there should be a trustee. Now, that's just my.
I appreciate that. I will tell you, though, there is a checks and balances on there, because John can't write a check and go cash it. There has to be two signatures.
Oh, no, no, I know that, yes, yes.
If it's me and our police chief, I mean.
What do you think, me?
Well, I mean, how many looks I have, we're gonna have to write.
I just, in the past, I've, I've chased down and made missed deadlines by one or two minutes, because I can't get somebody to sign the second signature. And it's just frustrating from a business standpoint, when you're trying to do business.
Well, and then I.
And I don't care that it's me, and if you choose not to do it, that's fine.
No, and I, I get that, but then, my question, my immediate response to that would be, why are we on such a quick deadline? Don't we, why are we writing checks?
There are certain times, like, uh.
When you have to mail twice a month.
It's usually posted for.
All these goes out twice a month for my water bills, or late bills.
And you can't send it till the day you figure it.
You can't, it's not, you can't do it ahead.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's usually the, the one that's usually.
See, now, that makes perfect sense to me, but just other checks, that makes me uncomfortable.
That's just it, there's never.
Now, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, that's usually, that's usually the only one that's, that I can think of that's usually time crunch, 'cause it's gotta go, it's gotta be at the post office by 2:00, and they don't know what the postage's gonna be until 10:00.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
There's a window between 10 and 2 that, so.
And that's why we're asking for only General, because.
Right.
I don't feel like someone else should be signing payroll checks.
Exactly, like, those are confidential.
You don't have to make a decision today, just think about it between now and next week, and let me know what you think, and.
Yeah, and if it's just General, and it's stuff you need, and it is timely, I do appreciate that. But if it's something else, payroll, or, then I'm thinking, why is that a problem? You should have that, have that ahead of time, okay.
Let's skip the TIF thing for just a minute, 'cause I think the billboard will be quicker. The South Maine Bull Board, I talked to Bob, how about?
Stan Ball.
Stan Ball. I, I don't know if we had a miscommunication, but he didn't think they could get artwork done in time. I tried to stress to him that if they were coming to come for our other sign on Main Street, on Morton, on the, well, it's the Saturday, the 27th, so, but I didn't hear back from him, so. He seemed to say, just scratch it, and they'll come to us next year earlier. So, anybody has any ideas for something to put up there, 'cause I know we discussed the, do it earlier. That's the only thing I could think of, 'cause otherwise, we don't want anything until June. The, the fair is what Dick was motioning at for the quarter. Yeah, and so unless anybody has any other ideas, that's what I would suggest, is putting something up for the fair early. And then, Dick, you wanna go over the TIF?
Uh, yeah. This is what I handed out last time, and this is a TIF application. It's not the application itself, but this is a TIF request from the Sleep Easy.
I think I might have that from last. I've got mine, Dick, I think, still.
Got your?
Yeah.
I'll take one if you've got it.
You do? Yeah, I still got mine from last time.
They may not be in the right order, but.
Yeah.
First one is a page.
Yeah, he gave it to us before.
First one is a page from Gwen Crawford, who's our TIF people. And she represents them and so on, and she said that, excuse me, uh, Patel is eligible for 1.1 man, TIF-eligible project cost. And basically, that's what the first page says. Second one is an estimate, only an preliminary estimate for a deal only, of what the taxes will be. Now, whatever their taxes are, 43% of the first amount of the taxes goes to the general fund of Morton County. After that, goes to our TIF account. From that, then we can spread off and pay them. One, there's, Barton gets 90%. Now, how the hell they ever got 90%? It's a good old boy, in my opinion, good old boy, backroom deal, all legal, but it was done. Usually, they're 50%. And I think Love was 60 or 65%. And I just projected, just for, just to estimate, just to show you. I took the 2019 estimated real estate taxes due would be 51,000. Figured that 43% would be going to the Morton County tax people. This would, and this would do because we made an agreement with them to extend the TIF until 2036. Uh, next real estate tax increment would be 29,000. 65% paid back to the real estate owner. The other 35% kept in our TIF account to be used to supplement other things, and maybe another somebody else coming in wanting TIF money or whatever. Now, this money doesn't come due to anybody until they pay the taxes. So if they pay the taxes, then that money is, was, is available after they take it back to.
So they have to pay upfront, and this is a reimbursement?
They pay like a normal tax. When they get their tax bill, then they pay it, and, and the county splits it and puts it over here, and then ours, ours and Ellen.
But yes, it's a reimbursement.
Yes.
So the reimbursement comes out of the?
Now, the whole idea of the TIF was, was to make people, let me rephrase.
Encourage them.
To allow people the opportunity to build something out here and be reimbursed.
Incentive to build in a, either wider or developed area.
This guy, I, it's my fault he isn't out here tonight, but this guy got off on the wrong foot. I believe he lied to us, if I was just to tell you the truth, on his application, things like this. The other application I sent in to Gwen, it came back, and this is what she said he's eligible for.
So Gwen is pretty much, she's the, makes the final decision, whether it's.
No, the board makes the final decision.
But she tells us if it's legal.
She makes the suggestion.
No, she doesn't make the suggestion. She tells you if it's legal.
If it's legal.
Yeah.
She just tells us.
Just the legality of it.
She tells that he is eligible for this. Now, we've got into the discussion of eligible and.
Entitled. They're two very different things.
Yes.
Two different things.
Just tell them, untitled. Well, be sure to tell new members that he's already been offered something.
He was already given.
That's why he's built.
All right, but your interpretation of what he, say what you're gonna say about what he's been given.
This is not my interpretation. This is according to Gwen.
All right.
The cul-de-sac was put in, and a sewer extension.
My opinion on the sewer extension, we have to supply sewer to this guy anyway. Right, John, wrong, John, or what?
That's, that gets very hairy situation. I mean, question. Yeah, if we want somebody to come out here and build a building, we've gotta have sewer out there for them. You know, I mean, we've gotta supply a utility to them.
But at whose cost?
But at whose cost is exactly right. You can ask, I mean, that gets into an engineering question, sorry to put you on the spot, but, I mean, it, it all depends on how it's set up. If you promise it to them, then that's one thing. If.
It was paid for out of TIF, I will tell you that.
It was paid for, and it was paid for on TIF.
But I'll go back to Gwen's letter that says he is eligible for 1.1 man based on this.
Sure.
But how many more businesses are gonna come back to you?
I'm sorry?
How many more businesses are gonna be able to come back to you? You let this guy double dip, and then other businesses can.
I don't, I don't see anybody else. He's never been approved for a TIF application, correct?
How did he get the sewer and the cul-de-sac?
Because I assume John, somebody, paid for it out of TIF, or something, made. Because I assume John, somebody paid for it out of TIF or something, maybe it was.
So, he was awarded that. I'm not, I mean, I'm not turning this.
But as far as somebody else coming back, I don't see it happening. Not saying it won't happen.
You said though, you did say, you lied. And I will say, I mean, we've had this conversation before. This man knows how to get money. He's got a big TIF project going on Atlanta. He knows how TIF works. So, keep that in mind.
I, I think Chris is a hundred percent on point that it, it's not, it's not about him personally, it's not about his business. I don't think. I think it's about a precedent. I also agree that. Uh, like, uh, what is it, the strings and they built, didn't they pay for their own water sewer lines out to their house? Cause it was not like a street already?
Yes.
Okay, so, they paid for that, but we paid for the stuff out to this dude's place in TIF. Which residential, commercial, they're different. However, um, he applied for something and he got something. And then he's applied again, saying he never applied and misrepresented himself there. So, I, I think he may be eligible under the law, but I don't think he deserves anything more. Uh, because he has misrepresented himself trying to get more. But I think what, what I agree with Chris on the most is it sets a precedent for coming back a second time. And then getting something a second time. Because maybe somebody else does that too. Cause if we do it for somebody, then we're telling every other business in a TIF district or any business looking to move into a TIF district, they'll do this for you. And if we say no, well, you did it for one guy, then what does that open up, open us up to the liability of a lawsuit? That's your favorite word, liability. So, I think this, I, I think partially, this guy doesn't deserve anything. Because he's misre- misrepresented himself. And if we were talking about this with him in the room, I'd say it. But, I mean, I'm saying it on camera and on a recorder, so, I'm saying it. But I think him aside, it's a, a dangerous precedent of people coming back, looking for more money. And then we've done it for once and now we, you know, we would be discriminating against somebody else we didn't do for them or. You know, it, it, he's creating a blueprint for doing TIF fishy to get money out of us. Other people will follow that blueprint. People aren't dumb.
Well, you know, and I, I get what you're saying and I do understand about setting a precedent, but again, what Gwen's telling us is what he's eligible for. So, if somebody that's already been awarded something wants to come back again, I say bring it on. Gwen can look it over and tell us if they're eligible and then we can look at it again.
But he's built.
But we've got Bartlett, they got ninety percent, we have different percentages, so what, is somebody else gonna come back and say, I like their deal better or? I want something, I mean, anything could happen. I get what you're saying, but somebody's always gonna be unhappy with what they got. I just am looking at this as, we pay them to tell us about TIF and she's saying they're eligible. I really don't care about precedent, cause if somebody else wants to bring it, Gwen tells me whoever is eligible, I'll look at it. I mean, that's the way I feel about it. I get what you're saying.
I think it's cool that he's eligible for all that and he should've asked for that in the beginning. And he should've negotiated a good deal in the beginning.
Cause I don't think we're setting any precedent, because if he's come back again, Gwen says we're eligible, or he's eligible. We've not approved anything yet. So, if it's a precedent that you can ask us if you're eligible.
I'm saying he doesn't deserve any money because that sets a precedent.
And then I think that is the individual, you see what I mean? It's like the individual, um, application. So, she says it's eligible, but then you can look at it and say, this is why I'm not giving him money.
The precedent that he's saying is the precedent of giving money after the project completed as opposed to.
The, the I is for incentive. What's the incentive? Like, he's not gonna pick his building up and take it away.
Sure. The problem I have with the whole thing is I cannot prove a hundred percent that our code official at that time gave him the proper information. That's why I am going to consider this, because I don't know what transpired between codes and Mr. Patel.
I, I agree.
I have no way to prove, none of us have any way to prove what was said in a conversation.
And, and I've considered it too, and I can't prove that it wasn't done right either. So, all I have to go on is.
We're at a disadvantage.
Well, all we have to go on is what's on paper. And I'm, I'm putting my hand on paper, not specifically this paper, but we have the other stuff, uh, from his previous applications and those things. Like, we have a hard copy of that, so.
Yeah, I.
Like, I'm going off of that and I'm. Trying not to consider anything he was told or not told or the fairness of that, cause there's no way to prove it, cause none of us were there.
The fact that Bartlett filed after they built that and they were.
Yeah, so Bartlett filed after, so what's the difference between?
Second, second project. Oh, yeah. No, the ninety percent's the second project.
I wanna see.
Okay, they got two different projects. They have eighty percent and ninety percent, two separate projects.
But they didn't file when they first built, we're talking about building it. You have, nothing is paid out till the taxes are, are paid on, okay, first off. Second thing, was there an application ever made for that cul-de-sac and that sewer in his name?
Yes. There, there were, from my understanding, this is the third official application, but the fourth application in general. The first one he submitted before he owned the land. And they said, you can't do that. The second one, um.
Two thousand fifteen.
Was two thousand fifteen and that was when everything, or is, am I, am I holding this right now? Okay, sorry, this is the third then. Okay, so the second one was two thousand fifteen and that's when the cul-de-sac and the sewer extension were put in. And if you don't have an agreement, I mean.
And that specifically was an application and says, this is what you get?
No, it doesn't, it, it was an application that Gwen sent back to me when I sent her the, asking how to start this and she said, he already applied, he was given a cul-de-sac and sewer and I went back and looked in TIF. If you don't have an agreement for money, you're not gonna have paperwork saying, I don't have an agreement to give you five million dollars. You know what I mean? Like, there's just not gonna be an agreement.
Board approve that? There's a board, there's minutes that the board approved?
I wasn't here though.
A cul-de-sac and?
They would've had to approve it to go through TIF.
I, I have one thing to say and then I want out of this, cause I'm not the TIF, I have nothing to do with it, but it's dragging me into it because of the sewer. There is no cul-de-sac out there, guys. I don't know why everybody keeps saying there's cul-de-sac out there. There, there was a cul-de-sac, that was the end of the subdivision, plain and simple. He brought the, he bought the adjacent property. The cul-de-sac goes away because now you can't get through it to get to the next property, so that it goes away. There's no street there. The street goes into his parking lot. There will never be a street through there because I dot says you can have an intersection within three hundred feet of another oncoming road, which that's Southbrook Road Stube. So, that means they will never be there. There's property north of it that can be subdivided, but that's a separate entrance, so there is no cul-de-sac. He did not pay or ask for the sewer. We had to supply him sewer. While Love was being put in, we threw that in on the TIF that was paying for the streets for Love's because it, not on Love's TIF project, but we pulled it out of TIF because it qualified for it, because it was in the area. So, that saved the village from paying seventy-five thousand dollars for a sewer stub. It's all out in the TIF district. It's a, it, it allows him to hook up the sewer. When the north lot gets developed, those people can also tap off of it, just like you and you and you. How, my house taps off the sewer down the street. We have to supply, so, he got it. And I'm not sticking up for him, cause I don't believe that this should go any further with him. That's beside the point. He did not apply for it. We put it in out of TIF.
Okay, so he did not ask. So, that's not an application?
Right.
Well, he had an application.
I wanted to clear up the sewers, like I said, and after that, I'm done.
That's good, thank you.
He had an application then, that was the one that Gwen sent back. This must be where the board didn't give him anything. I wasn't here then. So, actually, no, well, Sharon would've been. Do you remember Sleep-In ever coming to the board?
Do I remember?
You don't remember, see, that ever come into the board, like, four years ago?
I can't hear you good enough to.
Sleep-In, do you remember Sleep-In four years ago, a TIF agreement?
Ever, do you remember?
Do you remember it ever coming to the board?
I don't really remember.
I mean, I, I think we could get Steve Waltrip and Wilbur, Wilbur to shed some light on this, honestly.
The only thing I can tell you is he applied a couple of ti- tried to apply a couple of times and they were not TIF, TIF worthy. It wasn't, he was at, he was seeking money for stuff that was not reimbursable through TIF.
Right, and there's no reason we should give that.
But this thing, we've kicked this can for freaking two years.
Well, and I understand from Wilbur, and I think, I mean, Wilbur and Gwen, the, the board had tossed around trying to get him to move it out by Love's. Does this sound familiar to you?
And the reason I'm saying that, I, I was here, I was in St. Romo, I talked to him first about coming out of here. Cause they ran the old one next to the old beef, the whatever the hell it is.
Starlight.
Starlight, they ran the old Starlight and, and then I got out of here and then they came and they bought that and all that stuff like this, you know. But as far as them ever being personally reimbursed, it sounds to me like they were not.
They have not.
So, this is the, I look at this, this is the only application that has been approved by our people. As our people being Gwen and so on that way. And this is the only application that's ever been approved by them and, I mean, it states right there, they're eligible for one point one man.
Right, in that other email from Gwen, she had said, he applied and she forwarded the application and said, at that time, the board decided not to give any incentive. So, that, there is an email from Gwen that states that with that application. So, I, I mean, I just want everybody to know that it had come to a board before. This board obviously can do whatever they want, but a previous board had decided not to do it.
I'm wondering if I was on the board then. I might've been appointed.
I don't think you were. I guess that was three years ago or something. Well, I was talking about two thousand fifteen, now you're talking four years ago.
I was at the end of fifteen, so it would've depended when it was.
I think it was May.
Yeah, then I would've been, cause I was like September.
But I'm going off of memory here, if I had to get my hits up there, but I can dig through it a little bit. Anything else you wanna add or you wanna move on?
I, I think that we really need to, to go ahead with this because we have the so-called blessings from the tax, from the TIF people. And I think, if, if we don't pay this guy what he's eligible for, or something thereof. If we don't make a reasonable payment to him or, or set up a reasonable agreement with him, I think we're really setting ourselves up.
How so?
For a lawsuit.
Of course not. And I say of course not, is because it's an incentive to build, he's already built. We don't, we can, people can build all day long and it's not.
Problem is that you have Gwen saying he's eligible.
Sure, and people, people can build in the TIF agree, in the TIF district and we, we not give them anything. They're eligible, not entitled, and then it'll go back to that, that.
And anybody that I've ever seen that has applied and been approved by our TIF people has gotten money.
Right, but you don't have to, there's. My, my bigger concern is, is what's already been brought up about other, other, you're, you're doing this retroactively and having other businesses say, well, you gave them money, you gave them fifty percent, I only got thirty, so I'm gonna come back and ask for money after my project's already complete. That's, that's my biggest concern.
In the grand scheme of things, I would just really beg the board to make a TIF plan, you know what I mean?
Cause I see this as our fault.
It doesn't matter to me if he gets the money or not, but I would like to see you come up with a plan.
I agree.
We have this extension and we've, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with this district.
Exactly. Whenever something like this happens, I think you should always look at yourself and say, what can we do better? And I feel like. But we can't say who talked to him, who didn't talk to him, what he said, what he didn't say, and I see that as our fault. Because we didn't have it clearly lined out, we don't have a code official at that time that had a, an exact idea of what the board wanted. And I feel that that's great, we, how hard is it? Make a plan, follow the plan.
Have it written.
Well, figure out what you wanna do with this money. I mean, you've only got so many years left of this and.
One thing I'll guarantee to you is, if there's any money left over in the TIF after this is all said and done, we need to do something to spend this money.
That's what she's saying.
If you don't, you gotta turn it back over to the government, to the more account. So, I think we can find ways to spend it.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I could spend.
And John, I appreciate you clearing that out, that helps a lot.
But it's time to be done with this, one way or the other. We keep spending time in meetings with this nonsense and. You can pick on me all you want, but I have no problem with that.
Somebody, if you were eligible to.
Dick, I've been here, I have been here for twenty-three years and all the time that you have been here, you and I worked together for this TIF. I have never seen anybody start a multimillion dollar project without upfront knowing the two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is covered by the TIF, because that makes their, that determines whether they can or can't build. Because they don't know how much money they're gonna get out.
Bartlett's one right there.
This, they didn't need the money. This guy right here knew right up front from the get-go what he couldn't, couldn't get and he's pulling the wool over everybody's eyes. And I'm telling you right now, cause I've been in meetings with him when he's lied, lied, lied. He tried to get a permit that night that they okayed it, didn't even own the property. I mean, I don't care what you do with it, but it's time that we, we gotta get it straightened out and be done with it.
Well, and decide who you wanna do business with too. I mean, this is the village, you know, this is our community and we're putting our taxes. I mean, I, I don't know. Like I said, I don't, I'm with you though, I've been lied to by him and. No, you're right, I don't.
Every day here, you're asking us our opinion and we're just telling them. That's what we're doing.
You gotta trust the people that work for you.
Well, and it would be my opinion to go ahead and, and proceed with this.
Alls I ask you, and there again, like you just said, I don't have a vote. Make it low, low, low. They, we, we are not obligated to give him fifty percent.
Let's hear from the three new ones here. What do you, what's your guys', I, I'm not gonna, you could say pass if you want. Just because he's been approved for this amount of money doesn't mean you have to.
Hasn't, hasn't been approved.
That much to him.
Hasn't been approved.
Just because they said that he is eligible for that much money, doesn't mean you have to give that much money to him. You can knock it down to twenty-five percent. Fifty percent, you can give him five percent.
Especially not since he's a trustworthy person when, you know, he's not honest with whatever's going on either.
But, you know, as far, you know, what John said about the sewer, you know, I, I agree with John. They, he's not the only one using that sewer out there. If you don't develop that property out there, people aren't gonna build out there.
I agree with Greg's dissertation earlier, I think, uh. You know, they should be given one TIF grant and beyond that, there must be a grace period before they can double dip.
Okay, but go back. He never was. He may have had another grant, but he's never been approved for anything till this.
Right, he was given the sewer, but he, that was not, it was paid for at a TIF.
The sewer was not part of his tip.
He didn't apply for it. So, that's where I see the difference.
You understand? Sewer was not part of his tip.
So, how can we count that we gave that to him when he didn't ask for that?
Sewer was paid, he just made it.
But, but we're not obligated to give him anything, so he, he applied and then he went ahead and built.
This doesn't matter to you, but Steve says Bishop applied for TIF, his construction process lasted. Lasted two years before he dug dirt. Don't think they voted, Wilbur would know better.
So, it was never voted on, Steve doesn't. Well, it'll be easy enough to check in the minutes, what was voted on.
But he went ahead and built without a TIF agreement. So, normally what would happen with a, a TIF project is they would agree before building. And just to give you the, the three new ones, a little background, is right after I took office, he came in and met with me and he said, hey, I've, I've never applied. And I was told, and this is where the code enforcement officer gets, gets brought into it, he took, said that I was told by the previous code enforcement officer that I couldn't apply until after I completed the project. That's where I get hung up, because he did apply. He applied in two thousand fifteen, he has a complete application with all of his numbers. And he told me the exact opposite. He stood in my office and he said, I've never applied, I didn't know the numbers to apply. So, I wanna apply now. And he also came to the board and he said the exact same thing. And that was fabricated, I guess is the best way to say it, because he absolutely did apply. He applied twice, he applied once before he owned the property and he applied again and I believe May of two thousand fifteen. So, my opinion and I've only hit the.
So, you're fast and loose with the truth.
Uh, that would be my opinion.
But the first one was. But the first one was Gwen said he wasn't eligible yet.
Cause he didn't own the property.
So that, I don't see that as, as an application.
Correct.
So where's the two thousand fifteen one? That's the one we're talking about? They never went to the board?
I guess not.
So he was never given one, is there a rule of how many times you can apply? Cause that seems to be the issue here.
I, I'm.
Can you only apply once?
No, I'm just going off of Gwen saying, the board decided not to do anything with it, so, just the fact that they didn't even vote on it, I mean.
And that was that board, yeah, I mean, I don't really care then how many times anyone applies, if there's no rule about how many times you apply, I don't care. You know? And if he lied, he lied, I also tell you, he stood before us in a board meeting and said, he was given misinformation by one of our employees. And I have no way to say, Mr. Patel, that's an untruth, that bothers me. Again, because I don't think we had anything in line that said this is the process. Where, where that codes guy could say, this is exactly what I told him, he signed it, he understands. I don't know what transpired, that's what bothers me.
Mr. L, I heard from the other two, I didn't hear from you yet.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, I mean, you're not obligated to do anything, but, uh, I mean, obviously something's gonna have to be put in place so this don't happen in the future. Cause I mean, you're looking, I mean, it's, it's kind of a two-edged sword here, you know? Obviously, whatever votes is what's gonna happen, but you definitely don't want this to carry on like it has now, so. I mean, obviously, it's gonna play out, it's gonna play out, I mean, or, it's gonna vote how it's gonna vote, so. My only thing is, is something's gonna have to be put in order for the future, cause you don't wanna have to deal with this again and then have legal action.
Right.
I understand what you're saying, but you, you have to deal with this now.
That's why, yeah, I understand that.
You know, I'm not worried about the future, we can always do things differently.
I'm just saying, all of it's gonna have to be taken care of now, all of it, the whole deal.
Council, what I don't understand is you guys have spent so much time on this, your legal people said it's eligible.
Yeah.
It goes before the council and everybody votes.
That's what I'm saying, why don't we just vote on it, put it on the agenda?
Well, last, la- last time that we, we said the same thing.
Yeah, we wanted these guys to hear.
Well, that and we were hung up on a percentage.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think that's what we're still hung up on, I'm more than happy to put it on the agenda next week, we just. You wanna leave it open for somebody to make that motion, or do we wanna discuss a percentage?
I defer to Dick on that.
I just, I just use sixty-five percent, I mean, I, you could, you could have used fifty percent.
Dick, you're gonna spend a lot of time talking about a percentage before you what know whether this even gets approved or not.
Right.
If it gets approved at next council meeting, then the following council meeting, you can establish what the.
Well, I, I think you have to pass it as a percentage.
Do you agree that goes with that?
That's, so.
I mean, going forward, there, there's a cap on the percentage that anybody would get, is that what you're for?
No, 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 uh, hi- his agreement, we, we, like, for instance, if you wanted to make the motion that, that sleep-in would receive twenty-five percent of their taxes back through TIF, that would be the motion. Or if you wanted it to be sixty-five, or ten percent, or five percent, whatever, whatever that number is, is that's what the motion would be, so.
So those guys will have it?
Zero to a hundred, well, I don't even know if it's a hundred, I don't think hundreds, no, I don't think there is a, there is a cap, look.
I'd say the person that knows the most about this is Dick, as a board member, so, what do you think?
Sheet here, and you'll see fifty percent devoted to share, so that's just kind of a rule of thumb. And it says about the third line down.
They are currently, uh, like you said, sixty-five percent that Loves has, uh, we have a few that are thirty percents. And then Bartlett somehow has two that are eighty percent, ninety percent. Normally, you'd wanna negotiate something that has, that brings in more taxes, um, like if Walmart came to town, you could. Yeah, you give away the farm to get Walmart in because, because we live off of sales taxes, so we'd want.
No, I'd give them a hundred percent just to get the sales tax.
Exactly, right.
Well, and I was here when Loves was signed, and that is why they were given sixty-five, was because they counted sales tax coming in.
That's, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is that they produce a lot of sales taxes, so that's why those is a little higher.
So what do the other hotels get?
There's not one in place for Comfort Inn or, um, Holiday Inn.
Comfort Inn was, no, I, I take it, uh, what's the other, Baymont, Baymont was built. And they actually taken, took money out of this fund and gave it to Baymont. Cause he spent, he being Burtzel spent about three million dollars to run a water and sewer out on that side. And that's what allowed that whole thing to be, going to be or could be developed on that. And he was actually being paid back a percentage of the real estate taxes, but he was also given money out of the fund. Just like we gave the school, we didn't give it to them yet, but we, we obligated ourselves to school for a million dollars to be paid for out of this fund. And then he went broke, and when they renegotiated, they kept the money for the real estate taxes. And the other part that was supposed to be paid back, it just vanished. And it, it was done that way on purpose, because that money was, was paid by Burtzel, who should have been reimbursed for it. But he went broke, bankrupt or whatever, and it, it ended right there, you know?
We still reimburse Southwest Hotels.
Pardon me?
We still reimburse them.
You reimburse them for what?
For the TIF agreement, it was transferred.
The only thing part of the TIF that was transferred was the real estate part, wasn't.
I, I think that's what they're asking, or what, do you know what the percentages are on those?
I have no idea.
I have a suggestion, and you can take it or leave it, but I think maybe the board is gonna look at a number that you would wanna offer them in the grand scheme of things, and then divide that out by years to figure out a percent. Like, do you wanna give them back a million dollars, do you wanna give them back five hundred thousand, and then figure out from there maybe what your percent should be.
Well, based on five hundred thousand, let me see that cheese. Uh, this is all estimate here, but based on five hundred thousand, they were gonna get back, uh, uh, where is it, five hundred and twenty thousand, they're gonna get it back a- approximately half on a fifty percent return.
So that's what I'm saying, do you wanna give them five hundred thousand back, do you wanna give them two hundred thousand, do you wanna give them a million, and go from there?
I don't know what a fair percentage is.
That's what I'm saying, you can't really go by a percent.
Suggest that it's fifty percent, based on that estimate thing.
With the other ones, like, you could have a twenty thousand dollar project, and fifty percent of that is only ten thousand. But fifty percent of a million is five hundred thousand, so that makes a big difference, that's why, you know?
Yeah, I, I would say that you don't do the fifty percent what's recommended, and then, um, make some bylaws or something on how this is gonna be done in the future.
I definitely.
Just so that we get done with it, we get this over and we're not.
We don't need to spend this much.
Beating the dead horse and, and just get it over with and, and make some changes for the future.
Yeah.
Well, it don't look like you're gonna get a motion tonight.
Alright, well, let's move on then.
Yeah, no, I'd go with the fifty percent, I'd want it on the, yeah, I'd want it on the.
That's what I wrote down, was fifty percent, so, let's move on to public protection then, Chief.
Alright, and last committee meeting, I brought up the, changing the residency requirement for the fire department a little bit. You guys kinda asked some questions, um, about what we've done in the past and what we're looking at doing. So, this, a little, what's been going on in the past few months, it's been in the media a lot. That we're seeking volunteers, you know, there were times that Journal Courier's done a story, it's been in there, it's been on Facebook. And it's not just this community, it's multiple communities looking for, uh, volunteers. Um, there should be a article in the Source coming up, they interviewed me, so, so it'll be out there in the Source too, that, you know, we're looking for, more firefighters. So, and some things that we're gonna work on, actually, last night I was working on creating a new Facebook page for the fire department. I feel like that's one of the best sources of advert- advertising out there. Um, we're also having a cookout that we haven't done in like, at least ten years, our pork chop, we're by cookouts. We're gonna do that fundraiser on May twenty-fifth.
Good.
So, my plan is there to have some information for people to come, have some applications on hand, if you know, if there is anybody interested. Also, we talked about in the past, but hopefully on June fifteenth, we'll have an open house at the fire station. Open it up to the.
Is that a Saturday or what?
It is a Saturday.
Okay, I do.
I don't have all the details, you know, yet, but, uh, that way, if you know there's somebody interested to come in and see what we do, you know? Check out the firehouse, kinda see some of the things we do, probably do maybe some snacks or something like that, so. And also, I'd talk to the mayor a little bit, maybe, uh, our billboard is an option to put that out there that we're looking for volunteers, you know, I'm by retired assistant chief's Mike McEvers, that's how he found out about, the fire department needing help, so, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm, so that might be something to look at, you know, whenever there's a spot open for it. So, some reasons why I think this needs to change a little bit. Currently, the fire department's the only department in the village that has to live in South Jacksonville. I feel like we're kinda on the back burner a little bit, um, I just, and I'm not asking for over the moon, but just not strictly this city limits of South Jacksonville. And also, it would help maybe possibly losing some current members in the future, that maybe wanna live just a little bit outside of town. We lost two to three good people over the years that I can remember that we, that moved outside of South Jacksonville, so. They were great people, didn't wanna leave, but, you know, they wished to live outside of town a little bit.
Just a quick question, what about response time, do you have a, they have to be here within three minutes, two minutes?
No, so I was gonna, I'm gonna pass this out, what I'm, what I'm recommending. But, you know, I feel like we oughta get this in place, we're gonna be pushing even harder to recruit, that we need to have all our ducks in a row with what the requirements are. So, um, and I also feel like if we're providing emergency services to your house that's outside of South Jacksonville a little bit, you should have the opportunity to be a firefighter, if that's what you wish to do, so. I'll pass this around to you guys, this is what I've been up with, it's keeping it simple. I've talked to some other fire departments, multiple fire departments, and what they do, uh, just.
You got one, Greg, okay, Greg got one.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm don't wanna, definitely wanna make our, uh, South Jacksonville residents first priority of this, you know, it's. But, you know, that doesn't eliminate somebody that lives in our rural fire protection area that we provide services to, can apply. And, you know, they would also have to be able to respond to the firehouse in a safely timely manner, so.
What do you consider in a timely manner?
You know, it.
Where do you set the cutoff point?
Well, that, that's something that's seasonal too.
Right, you know, it's.
Depends upon the weather and.
It is, you know, and, um, these people might live outside, but they might not.
Probably a lot more of a mileage.
Well, if you get into miles, do you, I mean, in a couple of miles.
Rather than, rather than response time, maybe a.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm not looking for, you know, these guys that might live a few miles outside of town, they're not gonna be on our first truck out. It might be, you know, we need more help later on, or they're running our second and third calls while we're out, you know?
Obviously, your zone is, obviously, the cutoff is Michigan, what is south of town, your zone?
I mean.
That you're talking in the.
Right, so, and we do cover, we have some rural fire customers on the edge of Woodson and the sub- divisions out there. Um, and then we go over like the Lindville area to the west, and then to the east. Around one oh four Buster Sanitation down to like Ginder Road, somewhere in that area. So, I mean, it's not open up huge, but just like, we got this example right now where Southbrook's not included. You know, I got a, got a guy that approached me that wants to help, but he's just really outside. And I also have a member that's looking to maybe move out to Southbrook. So, you know, if we don't do something, you know, we could lose something, I don't criticize, I mean, I will be honest with you. I had a hard time with this when I was looking for a house, cause I ended up having to build. And it's just, you know, and, cause I, I have a big family, there's not too many five-bedroom houses in this town.
So then again, what's your time to matter?
I mean, it is.
You, you know, I wouldn't go by time.
I don't, I don't.
I wouldn't go by time.
Yeah, so he's got stated here, so.
Here's, here's, well, that, that can be changed, here's what it would look like if you did a five-mile radius with the fire department being in the center, um, and having Michigan as your cutoff point, Michigan. Um, but your five-mile radius goes almost to where you were talking about.
Right.
So if you say you live in a five-mile radius of the fire department, that would get you covered, you can't say, you, you live ten minutes away, well, ten minutes today is gonna be a different ten minutes from, uh, mi- January fifteenth of this year, I mean, that's, could be two hours. So, uh, um, and that's just my suggestion, is you make it a mileage thing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not totally objected to that, you know, if we're gonna make, Michigan is Michigan could still be the cutoff, or do we go five miles all the way around? I mean, to me, you're discriminating if you don't go across Michigan.
Well, uh, and, and, don't get me wrong, you could do that if you want. Um, I would stay south of it though, that's just my opinion.
I don't know, I know a highly qualified guy that wanted to get on as a volunteer, and he lives just by CVS. And he was bummed out that he couldn't hear, but he could get on a Maradona where his kids live, um, still living at CVS. Yes, I mean, a lot of them don't have really strict, you know, uh, requirements. And I don't think we need to go over the top, you know, talking about this, I mean, it's, it's, we got plenty of other issues we need to address and get moving forward on.
I'd consider just, just copying what they've already done, and they've already done this, this, this was a tremendous, uh, struggle for this council for years, for the police department, uh, the deal that came that, and we have something in place, and I'm embarrassed to tell you, I don't know exactly what it is, but.
And I'm fine, you know, if it's across the board for everybody, every employee, I mean, that would make the most.
And here's the deal, when we talk about response times, and it, it's not about response times, there's people that live fifty feet from the firehouse that are gonna make it there first, that are gonna be on the first truck, same way with police and everything else. It's the oh shit calls when the hotels are burning, or when we're standing out there for twelve hours in ninety-three degree heat because of chemical spill. Where you have guys that, maybe they're at work, but they've gotten off and now they can respond.
They can relieve.
Exactly, it's, it's really not about the response time, it's about how much help do you actually have, uh, cause they're short right now.
Right, and you gotta remember, for something big, they've gotta automatically mutilate with the sitting.
Absolutely.
Can I draw this, are you cool with that?
Yeah.
Chief, I'm curious, when you get a, a, a fire and, and there's, they're responding now, cause there are people that live really close to the fire station, so are those the ones that are routinely always on, you called it the first truck? And is that maybe why people aren't interested, because they can't get there quick enough?
No, I mean, cause, you know, if we're going out to a fire, we're gonna be rolling multiple trucks, you know? So, and if it's a fire in our community, we have multiple, multiple apparatus that would get everybody there, you know, so, I mean, it's, you know, we shuffle people around sometimes to where better jobs fit their needs, you know? So, I don't think that that's an issue, no. And I don't think that that's an issue, no, cause you know, the people that do live close, we're not, they're not always home, we're not always around, even.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, okay.
So.
On here, just so I can visualize it, would you be able to circle like roughly the areas that are cut, like we have rural fire.
I mean, I can make some copies, or you got some? Okay, I didn't know we needed coffee at all.
I don't know what.
You get them all, Sean. Get them online, I think.
Those?
Yeah.
I did those myself.
Okay, but you can, I, he's gotta think you can grow.
This would be a community park, so Michigan is across there.
So yeah, we're a little bit of Michigan somewhere in here, then.
Right.
We're gonna go all, we are rural fire coverage area, goes over here.
Okay.
And basically, we go a little past sixty-seven. So I mean, we go down to, there's places, and there's some places real close to Woodson.
Okay. Okay, that helps. I mean, I think. I mean, if we cover, like if we cover this much, I, I think you're absolutely right, somebody that lives, you know, here. That we would respond to a fire at their house or their barn or whatever, I think if they want to be part of the crew to help fight the fire on their own property. That they're paying us money to come to.
Right.
I don't see, I think that's, fair's the right word, or like that just seems like right, I guess.
Yeah, and it opens up the door to like, those people technically, really, they don't have, if they have the interest, then they don't really have too many options.
Yeah.
You know, cause of where they live, so.
And I'm, I don't wanna sound like I'm trivializing farm work, but farm work isn't a nine to five job. Where like, I work a shift, you work a shift, you know, everybody, they're like. If you're out doing something and there's a big giant fire, you've been like, okay, I'm just gonna shut it off and go. And I think that would be beneficial, obviously, you can't do that all the time, whatever, but um.
Well, people have flex times, I mean, you gotta take that in. They could be good candidates if they don't have. Tied down to certain, certain.
Do you think the people putting applications in for the firehouse, let's say, say you made the radius from. Nova Star Creek and then made it bigger, so that way Southbrook was in on it. I mean, do you really, do you honestly think the applications would be more people applicable, applicable?
I'm not saying, they're, I'm not saying that, I mean, I, I have no idea, I mean, I, you know, like, cause I have. I don't know anybody out in that area, but you know, my main thing is too, is keeping the current members that we have.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, you don't wanna lose any.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely not moving, but I got, I like the country, but luckily, I got the country in my backyard, so. I look out the back door, I can see countryside the field, so. Right.
I guess my only thing is, let's say you had a fireman that lived on Michigan. But somebody came in that lived on southeast a block and a half down, you gotta turn it down because they're out of the, you know what I mean?
Right, no, I don't, you know, that's, to me, that's closer than somebody.
Correct, so that's why, you know, it's kinda hard, I think it's hard to turn away people that are. Within, you know, like you say, set a certain ratio of whatever, whatever your response time you think is, you know, feasible.
I, I would say try some other things before you do this, you know, get your, uh get your open house going. And, and if you're not successful.
Yeah, and then people come and say, no, you, we can't, won't take you because you don't live in South Jacksonville, and then three months from now, we come and say. Um we're changing the residency, we gotta track the people back down, like, well, we changed it. Maybe that's not, maybe they lost their interest.
Opinion, that should be set in stone for whatever year, cause you don't wanna say, well, we're working on it, we'll let you know.
Yeah.
When they come to that open house, yes, sir, there you go, here's your application.
You know, here's, here's one thing, you know, we went through this. If people come up and ask me, why did you vote for that, why are you allowing our firefighters to live outside the village? You know, how do I respond?
Why are you allowing the police?
Yeah, and everybody, every other village employee, every member besides the fire.
Well, I, you know, that's, that's, you know, information I would need, so that I could answer those questions.
Plain and short and simple, guys, this, this is a. And you're gonna have to address it soon, and you're gonna have to address it for the next step, which is, which is the department heads. If you want qualified people, you're gonna have to open this up, we live in a tiny little community, there is not enough people here. There was a gentleman that applied for my position before, man, I'm gonna be honest, he was a hundred percent more qualified than me, the guy's a genius. He didn't, didn't qualify because he lived five minutes away from him, just built a brand new house. And he came to turn in his application and they said, we have to live in the building, I said, I'm not, I just built a new house. This has got to be addressed, volunteers are hard to come by nowadays, the church is everybody saying it. And truly, there's, there's no, I mean, you're looking at two different things, when, when you say. You gotta live five minutes away or whatever, you're looking at two different responses, this is not the people that are gonna be responding when you have a heart attack and hit the ground. I mean, those are the people that are close to the fire department, these volunteers that you're hiring are the people that are gonna support those people when they can't stand up anymore. And it doesn't matter whether they live twenty minutes away or two minutes away, as long as they're willing to volunteer and come and work and help clean trucks. And keep equipment up, um this is, you're gonna have to address this, and you, the, the council went through the same thing over the last fifteen years. With the police department, Dick went through all that, and there was, it was turmoil, and I understand, you want. Your tax dollars going to those people that live within the village, I get it, today's times have changed, it's just not feasible anymore.
But I'd like to um, to I guess, address what you both said, uh for me, from my own perspective. If somebody were to come to me and say, hey, why are you letting, you know, people from outside of South Jacksonville on your fire department? I would say, why do you care, they're qualified, they're gonna fight a fire. If our service doesn't dip, then what difference does it make where they come from, that's my opinion. And um. Oh shoot, now I don't remember what you said that I wanted to talk about, um cause I was trying to remember that thing, um man. Well, anyway, uh I guess that's my, kinda my, I guess kinda my thing, like I don't, I don't know. What difference it makes, oh, the, the tax dollars, where you said people wanting their tax dollars to stay in town, and I think. It's more important, in my opinion, to get a better value for the tax dollar than for it to reside here in town. Especially coming to like people's salaries, so if we're gonna spend, uh this is a fake number, ten grand on firemen. Then would you rather spend all ten grand and have thirty guys in the fire department that respond to every call? And they can be there for the twelve hour hazmat calls and we get all that stuff? Or because we're a small community and don't get uh as many volunteers, spend four of that ten on. You know, less than half as many people, but all those people live in the community, so their money is staying in the community, when. I don't know about, I, I, I can't say this for everybody in the village, but I don't keep my money in a bank in the village, no offense. Um I just, I like to be able to have US Bank anywhere, go in the country practically.
Cory's offended. He's hurt back there, we're down to two percent, right?
Don't ever come in for a good.
Hey, I'm happy with US Bank, but, but I've had an account there for forever, but anyway, what I'm saying is. If, you know, if you wanna get the value for your money, if somebody is getting that money and they live in a house that's not in our community. But we're getting a great service for it, then I don't see where it matters, to me personally. And I don't have as much experience in places where they've had residency requirements. But I've worked for public entities my entire career and never actually lived in the community that I worked for, except for a year of District one seventeen. And I think, I, people have always said I'm good when I leave, so they think I'm an asset. And I've, had they had residency requirements, I never would have been able to be, to be an asset at those places. So I guess that's my own personal experience and opinion, and that's why we get together to talk about it.
So are you gonna limit it to a certain geographical perimeter?
I would think it would be. I, I think it would be fair, for sure, cause I, I don't have like a number in mind, if that's what you're asking about, but I think it would be more than fair. To say anybody covered by our fire department could volunteer. So anybody, that's, that's why I was kinda asking for kind of a, a rough guestimate kinda outline. Um because if there's somebody out here that really, really, really wants the help of the fire department, and they're really, really good and they have. You know, maybe they're already a fireman and they just wanna do it, or they really want to and they have a drive to do it. And but they live here, well, do you want somebody that's got the drive to learn and the desire to be there and all of the, the, you know. I, I think you said like you have fire, firefighting in your blood once, like if somebody's got that and they're here, do you want them to work for Woodson, or do you want them to work for us? Cause I'd want somebody with all that passion, desire to work for us and make our place better as they become better. Rather than Woodson just because of where their house physically is, even though we would fight a fire at their house because they pay us. Where Woodson might come because of mutual aid. I don't know, that's maybe, it's like personnel being greedy with personnel.
Do you have anybody that works not only for South Jacksonville Fire Department, but other surrounding fire departments as volunteers?
Um not as volunteers, no, I mean.
Okay, and would that be allowable?
That's something, I mean, there's another, there's nothing in our SOPs or anything about that. I mean, it would be something to look into.
Like, I didn't mean like somebody who's a fireman right now, today, that's their day job, but someone who has been a fireman. You know, you're not a fireman right now, right, but you have been, so somebody like you. Um like if you lived here, then it would be good for you to be able to be a part of a fire department. Cause you have a wealth of knowledge, if you wanted to. And if you had that in your blood that you wanted to, I, I just would hate to turn you down when we're the fire department that covers you. But I mean, that's, that's me, I'll let somebody else talk, I can ramble.
Basically, tonight, you're just feeling the council out.
No, I'm, I was just trying to fill you guys out last month.
And how'd that go?
No, he's wanting an action item, this is, in the, in the rural fire district, right?
You know, just like Hill said, you know, I'd like to have this stuff in place whenever we're starting. We can tell the people, hey, this is what it is, and that, tell you right there if you're qualified or not qualified.
You have a list of qualifications now, correct?
The is age.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but you got something to work with now.
Yeah.
We don't need to know what that is.
But if you had something. Within a five mile radius, is that what you want?
I know, I'll live with five mile radius, yeah.
So how's that?
This is kinda what I was going for, is our rural fire coverage area, you know, but South Jacksonville residents are first priority.
How far is our rural?
Yeah, so what's the difference between five miles and?
It, it probably wouldn't be a huge difference.
Probably less than the five mile.
What I asked him to circle there, sorry, I didn't show it to anybody.
So you're talking north school to what's it?
South school.
Well, here's their coverage area right here.
Right.
Yeah.
This is just that five mile radius that I.
Right, so I'm almost, that's almost walnut, let's just say.
That's the, that's the five mile, the, if we went with rural cover, the rural fire coverage would be less.
This right here.
The big red is five, or the pin is five?
This is five mile radius from the, the.
Correct.
Village Fire Department.
So you're five.
This is their coverage area.
Walnut to Woodson and then east to west, so.
Is there a reason you wouldn't want it to be five?
I mean, the five, five will be fine, I mean, it really would, but I was just, you know, in our rural.
Is it easier to say rural fire area?
If we're gonna do five though, or we, you know, we're doing five miles all the way around, is my biggest thing. And I'm fine with that, you know, I mean, cause it can open up some other people that live in the city of Jacksonville, but.
I don't think you should split hairs if somebody's five point two miles out, you know.
He's five mile.
Reasonable about it.
Oh, no, Tom, it's five miles, yeah, you can't go five point two.
Doesn't know how big that line is.
So I guess.
Well, see, I would say I defer to you because you're the department head, so that's the way I feel, if you're happy with rural. Fire, cause that's even smaller than the five.
Ask Phil comfortable with that.
Put that on the.
Let's shoot for the five mile radius.
There we go. All right.
Thumbs up.
All right, thank you, um next business, the ambulance, you guys were talking about it earlier, earlier.
Yeah.
Several months ago, and it's first point you got, ambulance got brought up, and I know a few of you asked me to review it, so. I did, and I did find some things, that's. Our rates are not where they need to be. Different procedures that we're charging for, um I think, I don't know, we changed billing companies a few years back, I don't know. What happened, but anyway, kinda showed you here what um our current rates are. And these suggested uh rates are related to what Lifestyle Ambulance here in Jacksonville does. Which we need to be on board with, you know, same, same uh rates, yeah. And you can see on some of these things, um you know, guntometer, innovation CPR, spinal mobilization. We've never charged for, I have talked to the billing company and just some of these, some of these things Lifestyle charges for. And some of them they don't, um but these are the going rates for these types of uh procedures. So then they're on the right, it just shows you our increase.
So basically, that's the way to increase in our ambulance fund, we're, yeah.
Is this what the current one charges, uh Lifestyle?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got no problem.
Yeah.
I mean, we just, you know, it hadn't been reviewed in a while, so we got behind the eight ball on how, you know, keeping up with Lifestyle, so. You know, on the positive side, you know, it can only help us with that ambulance fund, increasing funds. And I will say, you know, it was kinda a learning experience for me to review this, but just because you send a thousand dollar bill. Medicare and Medicaid, they're gonna pay X amount of dollar and that's it, and sorry about your luck after that, so it just, that's the way life is, but.
So would you like this as an action item as well?
Yes, please.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have, thank you.
Great hero.
All right, um. I've got some things, I've just been kinda running into um not issues, but it would make life easier.
Take just a second, introduce.
Oh, well, come on, every code enforcement, um yeah. Um I started in February.
You don't go by pots anymore, so.
I'm married now, Smith.
What's last name, Smith, Jones?
Smith.
Smith.
The most generic name in the world. Um so, started in February, kinda new, things are going well. But these are some um issues that I'm running into, complaints and stuff like that, and I've got handouts on some things that. If we can maybe look at it, it would be beneficial, I think, to incorporate them in our ordinance. Um not only for myself, but when we do um the citations, it can be an easy written citation when we see these things. And then there's another, um we're having issues with burning, um lots of complaints on burning. What can be burned, how can it be burned, um and so I've got Jacksonville's code for you guys to look at. I, I think it would be beneficial if we could tighten up our, our ordinance, it, it would alleviate, I think, some of these loopholes. And we could have a little more teeth with them, um and there wouldn't be so many questions of, well, I saw so and so. Yeah, okay, well, you can, I, I think if we tighten it up, it'd be a lot easier for everybody. Again, it could be one of those things that when we get our citation books, we could easily write a citation and be done with it, um. You know, they, uh Jacksonville allows burning, they don't allow burning, um it's that thick smoke that we are getting a lot of complaints on. Leaves, dry yardways, pine needles and stuff like that. Um other option is eliminate burning altogether, but that's a whole, yeah, yeah, and, and if we eliminate burning altogether. Tim and I talked about this, which I hate burning, but it's, I know the other people like it. I hate burning, but it's, I know the other people like it and I understand.
You're gonna have an uproar.
Well, and that's the thing, I understand, and, and so, you know, a happy medium would be fantastic. If we did go the no burning route, then. Talk. Some, somehow cut a deal with Jacksonville to allow the South Jacksonville residents to dump. Their yard waste at the yard waste. Place in Jacksonville, right now it's three dollars a yard. For non-residents and commercial.
Yeah, we'd have to have some.
Something, yeah, cause I mean, we can't take something and say, sorry, because then, on the other hand, we're gonna have people not cleaning up their yards. Putting stuff in the ditch and then I'm, you know, we're gonna be seeing more complaints about, yeah, you know, so. I, just take a look at it and, you know, I'm open to. Whatever, but I think we do need to tighten it up a bit, it's too loose, um. People asthma, you know, their house smelling like smoke, I get it. Um, but also, I understand why people like the small backyard, fire pits and stuff like that too, you know, so. Um, that's Jacksonville's, I think it's, it's good, if we do go with the no burn, then we've gotta come up with something else. To give them at least an option, and I know that we pick up leaves two times a year and stuff like that, but. One time, is it in November?
November.
Is it for a week? Is it for?
The whole month, every Tuesday through the month.
A whole month, okay. Through the month, okay. So then that leaves us, you know, the rest of the time. Just having some options, I think, so take a look at it. See what you think, um. I know this stuff.
Yeah, there's got recreational.
Yeah, oh, there is.
No, we can do that.
We can do that, yeah, yeah, there would be like a recreational, like if somebody wanted to have a bonfire or a graduation party or something. There would be a recreational permit that they could call up and say, hey, we're gonna have a party. You know, and it'd be on file, oh, yeah, recreational burning's in there, yeah, yeah.
Like a fire pitch.
Yeah, 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 that's Jacksonville's rules, and so, and theirs are good. You know, but we. Yeah, I do too, and I mean, I'm not against burning, you know, I'm, I'm, let me rephrase, I'm against the big smokey, let's burn our pine needles and dry leaves all day long and. And that sounds awful, but it is just terrible. So just some options would be great. Um, and these other things are just, uh, again, Jacksonville has got a very nice, very nice, very nice ordinance and, um. It would be very easy for us just to, you know, I mean, we're neighbors, we deal with the same thing, just on a smaller scale. Um, another thing and is dog waste, we don't have anything, and I know. Just, it would be again. Easy to write a citation when we see these things, also neighbors calling, well, there are neighbors' dogs pooping in my yard. Okay, well, is it on a leash, oh, it's on a leash, okay, you met the dog. Or you see where I'm coming from, um, so that's Jacksonville's. I think that would be beneficial for us to have, too. Placing a vegetation on the street, Tim and I have talked about this, shooting your grass clippings, uh, I know that A Bait is really, uh, big on trying to pass no grass clippings, huge fines for that. Uh, it's unsafe to begin with, but it also causes a problem with public works. Heck, yeah, it does, and when drains are plugged up, we have water.
And the person that blows it in the streets, the first one to call, complaining about it being plugged up.
Yes, you know, so, and it's irritating and. You see these drains, we have plugged up drains and now we have standing water and now we're coming into spring and summer and now we're gonna have. West Nile brewing and all of these other things and it's just. Unstable, the initiative. So again, Jacksonville's got a nice, um. Snippet in their ordinance for it, I think it would be something that would. Be beneficial for all of us, streets, you know, just the community in general, so, um. Yeah, just take a look at them and, and I've proposed where they could go and add to the property maintenance. As well. But other than that, life's good, so, and.
Question?
Yeah. I hope I have an answer, I probably will.
Eight o'clock at night, guy's burning, are you gonna go out yourself and, and write him a citation or is the cops going?
Well, I mean, we could talk about that, um.
Well, you could very be thinking.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
So let me address that.
Okay.
We, uh, we spent an hour this last week addressing that very thing, um, and that the officers respond, we get the, the call goes through the police, the police respond, so they would be the ones that issue the situation. It doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have to go through codes. Quite honestly, the way, uh, a lot of the municipalities are written and, and maybe that means how Jacksonville Councilman can do it, which I know that's not the roads are going down, but. No issue at all, as far as timing, cause the officers have always written.
Sure.
The code violations regardless of whether it's, you know, burning or.
I think that's why it's gonna work so well with how. Mixed in with the police department.
It has worked extremely well.
Yeah.
The, the ones that. Bree's bringing two here, the ones that we're facing on a daily basis, John and I spend. A great amount of time in the course of the week talking about drains being plugged and so on, that's where the grass came from. Uh, the, the reason that it's worked so well, I, I, I could give you a dozen examples, I'll stop talking at this. Here you'll call me along this way, the guy, but. We, we've addressed problems, we get problems called in. Daily and one of them being, how come people are parking in their front yards and their front yards are all mud and so on and so forth, so I walked in the other day, said, Bree. I'm getting my butt chewed about this, what do we have? And within fifteen minutes, she walked in and gave me the ordinance that you're not allowed to park in your front yard, it's.
Right.
Trailer trash city, so. She's draft, uh, drafting a, a letter that the police officers can actually leave on somebody's windshield and make contact, just as a friendly reminder, hey, you can't do this. Uh, it's really worked out quite well with. And she's just bringing ordinances that we've come across and. They just don't quite work for us, we're not trying to steal from Jacksonville, we looked at Chatham.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, we've tried to look at other areas and say, what would work best for our community? We had a pretty good idea of what your reaction would be when we said no burning.
Yeah.
It would be nice, but when she comes to you, if, if she does with no burning, she'll have options like the city now.
For sure.
Or whatever, it's your decision.
So what are we doing about the police officer register?
Uh, it's being fixed.
You know what?
Parking in the front yard?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, uh, met with a couple different contractors and he's trying to make the.
He extended his.
He's got mud out in the street now.
He extended his culvert last year so he can extend that driveway, I think it's two faces, I think.
He should be starting soon, he did tell me that, I mean, he's got it lined up and.
So you're gonna be that lenient with all the other residents?
We have been. There's, I think on our list right now, we've got twenty-one or twenty-two. About the exact same. And that's the nice thing about Bree, she's honestly, she's been lenient with every ordinance violation, she's giving people. Thirty days and then going back and said, hey.
What are you trying to grow some trees?
She's worked with one.
Since she started on the.
It got moved. I was, I was very excited.
Dick, Dick, where are we at with, I wasn't able to attend the last codification meeting, so did we get all the way through that book, that last one?
No.
Okay.
No, we're just really kinda getting into the. Building codes and.
Okay.
And all that stuff, so. That's something we need to, you guys, we need, Tiffany, if you would, get these guys a copy.
We'll have to get, um.
You know, I can't.
The blue copy.
Yeah.
Blue book.
I'll need some ones then.
I got.
I, I can bring mine, but I can't use this.
And I can take a good copy.
And then, once we're finished going through that, we can take whatever we wanna add to this and then with it and then we'll. We can pass all that at once.
I'll make sure you get that tomorrow.
Thanks, I, actually, that's good, I'm glad you said that, because they've emailed me several times, we're way behind.
Yeah.
Their deadline.
Yeah.
So, they would like that.
But yeah, that's, these are just kind of the ones that have been reoccurring, so I just wanted to take a look, and the reason why I printed off Jacksonville's, we, you know, I've looked at other ones, it, they're just, they're our neighbor. I mean. We're just a smaller scale, you know, and, and some aspects and these are just kind of basic, basic ones, so.
You got something to fall back on too, cause while they do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And all our, truthfully, all our rules and regulations came.
Yeah, and I mean, they, they make sense and I think they could be easily applied and it would cover. You know, a lot of bases, you know, help out a lot of different entities, not just me, but the police and, and public works and. And stuff like that, so, um, but yeah, I try to give everybody a voluntary, you know, talking about leniency, I do a, um, you know, a ten day voluntary compliance. I wait for them to, you know, come back to me, um, I, they, pretty much, all of them except. Two people have contacted me after they received their letters and told me their, their game plan and. I mean, they've, they followed up, they might not, um, you know, call me. And say, hey, Bree, it's finished, but I mean, I, I've got my eye on all of them and things are getting done, there's two that, and. We'll get to them, um, I, I just need to go a different route and that's fine, I mean, that's okay, um, so we do try, I try to do the voluntary, if that's not, then there's other ways that we can do it, but yeah, I'd like to give everybody the benefit of the doubt.
You'll get those two and there'll be two more.
And though, yeah, I mean, you should see, I've got a list and.
Not yet. Okay, he's getting.
Hang on.
Okay.
But yeah.
When you need help, holler.
That's, that's that.
I'll call when you want me to.
Call Charlie.
Let me call, okay.
You have a village vehicle, don't you?
I do, I do, I do.
Is it identified with?
I do, it's gray and it has code enforcement on the side and.
We retired them.
Yeah, 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 I, uh.
Dunrash and a bike window.
Yes, yes, and dog spray, because I don't like dogs. I don't like dogs. Um, but no, it's been real good and.
Hey, Charlie, he's ready to go.
All right, we're gonna skip John's, he's gonna have somebody speak, so. Uh, parks and tourism, since Stacy's not here, we'll go down real quick, uh. I'm gonna skip the book board just for a second, the Godfrey Park things, I know we talked about a location to get the rock. But, for like me, I don't remember. Where the great rock, we had some names.
She said.
Monument.
Jacksonville Monument and there's a lawn care place or something.
And then we talked about landscaping, but now with, with Stacy going out, she was kinda. Running that, so.
She was gonna, the last I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, but she was going to get hold of somebody for bids to first putting in plants and trees and all that kinda stuff.
But with her going out and new people coming in, I, I think we're gonna have to.
I do know that somebody met her down there, cause I unlocked the gate before the park was open, so I, I know she's met with somebody to, to get some prices.
So I'll get ahold of her and see if she has anything to pass along to us.
I don't know how far they got with it, but, but they did meet.
But.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Back to the rock thing, you know, and, are you, have you? Considered dolls?
I, I don't know anything about the makes them, so.
They've got a big, big rock in the back.
Stacy was kinda in charge of that, but. We've been nothing done yet.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm getting at there is more than anything, and I'm, I'm gonna mention it down, I guess, is we'll have to form new committees and whoever wants to kinda take that bolt by the horns, we'll. Let that happen. So, but those are two things on that agenda, whomever wants to run with that can run with that. And then the, uh, the Milton, Milton, the Wharton billboard image, this is what the, uh, and I think everybody got that emailed, is what. The ad agency, I used to say ad agency, the billboard agency, their art department came up with. Uh, if everybody's okay with that. Would we tell them tomorrow?
Do you have a copy of that, if not?
Yeah, I saw, I, I don't know, I'm not. Too thrilled about it, to be honest with you, I think it's. Not clear and precise on the directions.
He saw.
I think the hotel signs maybe need to be a little bit bigger on there. That's my opinion.
May, maybe you put. Hotels on the left on Main. Two point three miles or whatever, you know.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Cause people coming in, they don't necessarily know where Main Street is.
Right.
You, I mean, you're having to look at the street signs.
Well, that's why I mentioned the Ferris wheel.
Ferris wheel, yeah, but they might get impatient, maybe they need to know basically how far from the sign to the main street.
Right, cause they keep going to Main.
Yeah, turn off some.
Right.
I think for the hotels, uh. In all fairness, I feel like the hotels should be at the bottom in alphabetical order. Because the way they are now, you have three hotels on one side, one on the other. Holiday Inn's at the top, Comfort Inn's at the top, Baymont's, Baymont's at the bottom. If you have them all in one line, alphabetical, nobody can gripe about their location. Um, and I showed this to a few people, I mean, I don't really have any issues with it, except they thought it was for children. Because they said, oh, is there like a children? Play zone, and I said, no, read it again, it's hotel. Zone, and I don't know if it was the coloring, I like bright colors, but I don't. You never know what other people think when they see it, so. Um, and I did not come up with the idea about the hotels in alphabetical order, I have a son that does social media for his living, and he said, mom. You always put them in alphabetical order, same size, no one can complain, and he said, if I were you guys, and that, cause he said, what's your deal, and I said, we're promoting hotels. He said, then I'd make them the biggest and just a little bit of wording. And that was, I mean, a lot of thousands of dollars of U of I education. And I, he said he doesn't do billboards, but he said, just looking at it, I would not know you were advertising, um, hotels. So.
Should it be motel instead of hotel?
Yeah, are they motels?
They're hotels.
They're hotels.
What's the difference?
One, one you stay in, one is outbuildings.
So which one's which, John?
Like Starlight would be a little.
A motel.
Hotel is when you go.
And see Comfort Inn actually says by choice hotels, so I guess they're all hotels.
Hotels have become a thing of the past.
Right.
So, I mean, I think it's a good starting point, and you know what, I got the information that we're like on a deadline and I really don't care, because if this is gonna be up there for long term. Then I think we need to get it right, because I don't think we should hurry up because they're telling us they have a deadline, and that's just me. Because I don't want it to be up there and then us say later, I wish we would've done this and. I wish we would've done this. And I don't know, was this the first time the new, three new trustees have seen it?
No, we saw it on email.
You saw it, okay.
Yeah.
So what are your guys' thoughts?
Thanks to Tiffany.
I agree with having them all in line and, you know, wording on the side. If I was to look at it, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, uh, too thrilled, I guess. You can simply put in there, you know, continue on or something. Three miles to Main Street, turn left at Ferris wheel.
I think that's the most important thing, the way I'd say it, is give a mileage from the sign to the Ferris wheel there.
And maybe that at the top, so you see that.
Instead of the then only two miles, cause once they're on Main, we.
Right, right.
Yeah, you could've deleted that perhaps or put.
I tend to look at my. Odometer to see mileage, if I'm, you know, they say two point three miles, I'd be like, oh, I'm gonna check.
Yeah.
People have short attention spans.
They do, and apparently it needs to be quick, like, the least amount on here, so when, cause you only have a couple seconds when you're driving by.
Well, just FYI too, these aren't, they're not a, how do I say, they're, they're, they have their art team, but they're not an ad agency.
Right.
So. It is what you got, uh, there are, the other option we could do is actually find an ad agency and say, here's what we have.
Yeah, you say maybe that's another issue.
I have no idea what it would cost, but we could, I mean, I could, I could find out for you by next week and.
And maybe then they can create something.
Them create something that we send to the, the sign company to use, cause like you said, it's gonna be up there for a year.
And maybe if it's something everybody likes, it could be, um, new logos, business cards, whatever, you know, I know that's all a big change, but that's what ad agencies do.
The only thing about going to an ad agency is you're gonna have to find someone that has comparable software to what they use, cause they're gonna have to send that stuff.
Sure.
To them.
And I would've hoped they do, if they're in that business, I would think it was comparable.
Put them together and they'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I've been the person having to figure it out.
Tiffany, I do appreciate you.
It happens.
Doing all the work on it, cause you really didn't know what you were looking for, I appreciate that.
I did not create this, um, I don't take offense to anything being said here, because, um, that's not my expertise by any means.
But it gives us somewhere to start, which is great.
They sent it to me, they sent it to me and to our mayor, and I didn't like certain aspects, and I kept asking them to change things, and this was where. About as good as we got it after several tries back, but, um, yeah, I don't take offense to any of that, because like I said, I didn't. Not my, uh, I'll take any project and run with it, but that's definitely not my expertise, so.
All right, we'll do some more checking on that and see if we can, how much, how much something else would cost, so.
Rick Rawson, I don't know if he designs, does Rick Rawson do this kinda stuff?
He designs, he makes designs, but I'm not sure.
I know he does art, but I don't know if he does.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
There's a little bit of.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, this would be essentially just like designing for a t-shirt.
Well, that's true.
Because, you know, let's just say, you know, sponsorship for a baseball tournament, it's gonna be the same, in the same ballpark, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, it might not be a too bad idea to.
Yeah, ask him.
Yeah, ask him, yeah.
All right, John?
Jamie's presentation's gonna be over in an hour.
Oh wait, yeah, I thought we were talking about the tourism grant.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot about them, you're on, you're on here, I just, I skipped you, my apologies, uh, Morgan County.
Good, well, I'm Jay Harris, Gary Hadden, so we're, I'm president of the Morgan County Twitter, and Gary is the entertainment chairman. And so we're talking about the, uh, um, getting grant, you know, money to, uh, help out the fair. Um, the fair's been doing a lot of different new activities, uh, one of them rodeo, uh, we did, uh, last year, had a really good reception from it. We've got, uh, some copies of our application, um, what we were hoping that the city of South Jacksonville do is may help us. With that, as far as taking our, of this kinda the next level, um, the rodeo, the free event, um, that's, that's one thing that we've got a lot of. Really, really good, uh, reception from the community, uh, we've brought a lot of people in, a different group of people, and we've really been striving for the last. Uh, several years to bring lots of different groups of people in that maybe not, uh, weren't a fair pager before. And, um, we've, we've kinda ramped up the rodeo, there's a new, new one, we've, uh, been working with the, uh, tractor pull, trying to expand that. We've been trying to, uh, work with the demo derby, we had a new promoter last year, and we're bringing people from a bigger area, um, in for the demo derby. Um, uh, what we're trying to do is bring people in for a larger geographical area, and South Jacksonville hotels are, are perfect for that. And a perfect, uh, business that they're gonna use, uh, they've got a lot more parking, uh, that art painters need, uh, when they come in for the rodeos. Uh, they're coming from as far away as Missouri, um, Iowa, uh, so they're gonna need to stay overnight, um, we're hoping to kinda promote. The South Jacksonville hotels, um, getting more people, I mean, staying in rooms, uh, because a lot of the people, um, they're starting to come to the fair now. It's not just a day, uh, event, I mean, they're gonna come on, like for the horse events, they're gonna come in on, uh, on Wednesday for the rodeo. They might stay for the weekend for one of her concerts, or for one of the other horse events, I mean, we've got, oh, uh.
Three different, three different horse events right now, that, um. So, um, the, you know, just the top one, what he says, trying to get people in from, you know, Iowa, Missouri, so forth, they're gonna come, they're gonna get the I seventy-two. So the access is, you know, just, it's a perfect fit, um, the trailer, or, you know, whether it's a demo derby, whether it's a horse trailer. Whether it's a tractor pull, whether y'all look at trailers, pull their equipment, so, so it just, it's a, it's a solid, solid fit, and it's the same way with, um, the racetrack. I mean, obviously, we're trying to expand the grounds, like he said, our improvements have been huge, and it's not so much for the fair itself, it's for the off season. Uh, we're hosting wedding receptions, I know with the block of hotels that you guys have out here, um, you know, if they have a big wedding party coming in town. It's all right here, whereas, you know, if they've tried to work, say, with Jacksonville, you got one on the west end, you got maybe one in the middle, and you got one on the east end. It's not to get, they wanna get together and, you know, order pizza in, in the center lobby or so forth, whatever, it's all right here. And so that's the thing, we're trying to branch out, it's, it's not so much for just the fair itself, but make our grounds more accessible and more user friendly for the community. To have different events, um, so that's just to, to book things, so Hamilton's get really cool really fast. You gotta be almost a year and a half, two years out to get something that you want, especially for like a wedding reception, so. Uh, when we redid the grandstand underneath it, if you've been in there before, it's completely redone, it's really nice and. We worked very, very well with, uh, Mr. Dobson on that, and, you know, it's getting rented out more and more all the time. We're redoing what we call a four H building, we put completely metal on outside of it, we pretty much gutted the inside, we're in that phase of that process now. We're looking to get heat and air conditioning back, so those are just a few of the improvements that we wanna do to make the fair more accessible. I guess the grounds, facility more accessible throughout the year, and that will hopefully, uh, you know, build and enhance the, the tourism. You know, for the Morgan County and, you know, like I said, the access of seventy-two and so forth, that's why we wanna use our events, these three events during the fair. Try and, you know, make a nice pop or splash and get people to see it and.
So we, we've tried to upgrade our, or, with, with, I guess, additional funds, we could upgrade our offering at the rodeo, upgrade the offering for the demo derby. Upgrade the offering for the tractor pull, bring more people in, just hopefully be coming through South Jacksonville, using your hotels, your truck stops. And, um, again, partnering with us, um, usually a lot of our advertising, I mean, we, we're still the fair book, that's published over twenty thousand times. Um, we use a lot of, um, onsite advertising, as far as billboards, like digital billboards that are different events. Uh, that we can plug into the South Jacksonville hotels, or the truck stop, or whatever you folks would like to see, uh, to try to, try to help you with your cause. And, and help the fair, um, and it's, uh, been a great event, and we've got a lot of really good, um, supporters, volunteers. And, um, a lot of people running with this whole idea, and we, we wanna just keep on building it, making it better, and, and be a bigger part of the community.
But so, we'll entertain any questions we got, and like I said, we're, um, fairly new to this, so, uh, as far as the, the factors with this grant. You know, we would need some feedback as far as the, your advertising, you know, what you want to see, that type of thing, to make sure that we, you know.
I'll kick in one thing on this, very, very few, say, or, fairs that are in existence make any money, most of them are, are broke, going out of business. These guys do a job out there, and they've got money in the bank, they continue, they'll listen to you, they'll continually promote stuff out there. This weekend, there's three events going on, you've got, of course Dobson, he's got the World of Outlaws, but they have some kind of a craft show, and they got a circus out there tomorrow night. So there's always something going on, I think in the month of May coming up, I think there's eighteen events coming up out there. And you guys are on the website, and people can look at that and all that, and you have a truck show coming up, I forgot the date, but it's coming up.
That's a big event, you know, we'll bring, I mean, they'll, it's a two day event, or else it goes late in the evening, but, you know, um. They're gonna socialize and party and so forth, so they, and they're gonna want, not gonna wanna drive, cause they're coming, it's a central like truck show.
I think it's man women.
Yeah, I think that's correct, yes.
And, you know, it's gonna bring, last year, that pretty much took over the whole fairgrounds, so, um, and as we get it, I mean, our whole board is completely volunteer. Uh, there's not one, uh, our secretary, that's the only paid position we have, so we're not doing this per se our way. This is for the community, and honestly, it all goes back to support the four H program, which is the kids, so bottom line, for us, that's what it's all about.
And you have the mother of the champion mutton buster, right?
There you go. Is that not fun?
Well, we like to see you updog ring, huh? I'm totally kidding.
We love it, it was awesome.
Yeah, she is, but, um, she might be too heavy, but she woke the boys. Like twenty-five.
But that's probably one of the.
It was so fun, and there were so many people there, that it was just like you wouldn't believe that many people were there.
That's the pride of this.
Me too, yeah, we, I couldn't even see her hardly, right, cause they were just.
Additional bleachers to put up, and we're gonna bring in more, we have some portable that we're gonna bring in too, uh, but I mean, once you get in the gate, then it's free. So, but those are the things that, you know, great to have, and we put a lot of money into that arena, we called in sixty, seventy loads of sand. To get the proper footing for the horses and everything, I mean, it's.
Re- redid all the fencing to make it more safe for the rodeo.
Lighting, P A system, everything, so, we just wanna keep building on and keep making it better.
But it's a five day deal, you know, I mean, it's.
Right.
And they just, there's a lot of people, I don't know, I don't know, well, how many people be bringing, what's the gate attendance?
Oh, twenty thousand plus.
Over a five day period.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably, yeah, at least twenty, probably twenty-five, you, you know, the concerts, it'll vary.
Right.
Uh, I know last year, we had folks coming in, um, they came in Thursday, they took Friday off, and they didn't leave till Sunday, they were in from Indianapolis. So, you know, you just, as you keep getting more of that repor, and they absolutely loved it, they thought it was great, so.
We had a pair of concert tickets sold in Alaska last year, we don't know if they showed up or not, but they're on.
They're the ones doing the parkers on, you know, she might.
Now, what's the, uh, what's the requested amount on the screen?
Well, we, we, we gotta break this down, we didn't know if you wanna do this like a, a total grand amount, or do it by event. Uh, we figure that we need about, for the three events we're talking about, about ten thousand dollars each event would help that. But we can kinda go whatever, we really know exactly how you folks wanted to do it, uh, I mean, we, we don't wanna ask for too much. Uh, but we, we spent a lot of money on the different events, and, and we would, you know, really like to partner with you in some great fashion of doing this.
And which, which three events now?
Rodeo, tractor pull, and demo derby.
Okay.
And do you have the dates of those events?
Your live.
Eleventh on the demo and the, um, rodeo, fourteenth is the tractor pull.
So the demo and the rodeo are the same?
Yes, same day, we have two different venues, we have the venue in front of the grandstand and the horse arena. So, we did that, cause we're kinda pulling two different crowds for that, I, and I think if you were there last year, you could see that, I mean, there's a huge crowd for the rodeo. The rodeo's been a really big deal, we really don't have a way to charge for the rodeo, and that's, it costs a lot of money to do it. Um, I, when we tried doing it, oh, probably, what, ten years ago?
Yeah.
Nine years ago, it, it cost us big time, because we didn't have a revenue stream coming in to pay for it. Uh, it was a really, really good event last year, we, we had a lot of money we all put into that, um, our promoters really helped us out on the cost. But to expand that show, to keep it fresh, keep more people coming in, we're gonna have to put more money into it. Um, the demo derby is also like that, we, we've tried to start out small, just to kinda get changed up, to get the people coming. Um, but, you know, we're limited on what we can give out for, for prize money, and what we can pay for promoters and things like that. So, we felt like we could probably enhance that event, uh, the tractor pull is an all day deal, I mean, it starts out at like nine o'clock in the morning, and they're gonna be still pulling it like. Ten o'clock at night, so, or nine.
Weather permitting.
Weather, yeah, weather permitting, so, what we've tried to do with that event is we brought in a garden tractor pulling, um, event. That's gonna be kinda midday, and that's bringing a whole nother group of people in from outside the community, that's, there, there's a, there's a few local, uh, garden tractor pullers. There's a lot of them that are coming from, uh, greater distance, and, uh, that's brought more of a family crowd, uh, people on the grounds, uh, throughout the whole day. There, a lot of those Sunday people are coming in the night before, and they might come see the concert on Saturday night, stay in Jacksonville, come out. Or, or South Jacksonville.
Trailer, is there gonna have a trailer?
And, um, and they come out to the fair, so, so I ask, we're hoping that if we can offer a better show, offer a better, um. Oh, I guess, group of, of classes, to bring more tractors in, bring more people in, then hopefully you're gonna see more people coming through South Jacksonville. Stay in the hotels, I mean, they're, they're gonna stay in South Jacksonville hotels, because you guys have, I mean, for real ones, as far as for parking and accessibility. Your route of seventy-two, and if we can get the word out, get the people into your hotels, get it into the new truck stop, I mean, I, I think it'd be a wonderful thing. And, uh, we'd do all we could to try to promote it, and, and show on our website, all the people we deal with, how we're, um. We're, we're gonna try to help, help you guys get some more people in hotels.
Does your board have any, um, problem with, or any, a- any reason they could not promote? Our hotels loves quick and easy, um, in your advertising, or put us on your website, is there any problem with that?
I mean.
Like our logos?
No, for these events, I think, um, we would definitely be able to handle that without a problem, cause, um, you know, our, our Facebook page. I think there's close to fifteen thousand, um, likes to it, um, obviously last year with Kane Brown, it kind of exploded, which is fine.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then there's a actual, a Facebook page for the, the horse shows, and she's continued to get that a little bigger and bigger each time.
Okay.
And, um, so, from that standpoint, no, I think we need to, um.
Okay.
And I guess, I'll just throw this out there, while you're talking, I'll, I'll be upfront with you, we have a, um, a concert package already in place with Hamilton. I'm just saying that, just so you hear it from me, or hear it from us, that's been in place for, since we split the two nights of conferences. So, uh, we've had a great partnership with them, and I guess we go for, we like loyalty, so to speak, we're being good to us, we're being good to them, it's a good partnership. And I don't want you guys to think that, you know, anything, yeah, I don't share it anywhere else, but I'll be upfront, we wanna maintain that, cause it's been a good working relationship. And I don't think we need to, you know, burn bridges.
But that's your concerts.
Right, and that's just the two nights of the, there are the, yeah, we got the Friday night.
So you have no hotels attached to the events you're asking, that's perfect, so do you have any issues with saying brought to you by the Village of South Jacksonville? Or in, in partnership with the Village of South Jacksonville, or something like that?
For those events, those three events, absolutely not.
No problem at all.
Cause we're talking about all the advertising we can get, cause it's tourism.
I just passed this out, this is what Dobson put together, and it says, more at exit sixty-four.
Yeah, I really like that, yeah, I really like that.
Now, this is not a billboard or any else, but this is what he's going to.
Yeah, they're not now fatal, though.
You may wanna tie something in like that.
I, and, and like I said, our, some of our biggest events that we have at the facility is the Speedway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we work very, very closely with.
Well, that's kinda what I was thinking, we've already given the Speedway money, maybe we could actually make some of the promotions look the same.
Keep this straight now, you guys are separate.
Yeah, you are separate, but you share a facility, so I'm thinking some of this could be similar.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and the big thing, big thing with us, we're all a nonprofit, you know, we're, we're doing the B D A, I mean, we're, we're almost on the verge of being a service organization. The way we work, and, uh, we're, we're not set up that way, but that's how it's evolved in the last ten years, and, um, I, I. We both, we both feel that we could really do a, a lot of good for, for you folks as far as rodeo hotels. Because you already have that connection with, uh, the Speedway.
Yeah.
And maybe we can get more of a year around type effect, uh, coming into your hotels, and, uh, yeah, cause we've got, we're, we're starting to get livestock shows. Interested in coming into our fairgrounds, they're gonna have trailers, they're gonna need hotel rooms, and we start getting some of these, um, like, L Y Club life association. L Y Club pig association, we have a, uh, there's a goat show that's talked to us, um, some of these, uh, different preview spotlight cattle shows. I mean, they're all gonna have stock trailers, they're all gonna have money to spend, they're gonna need to buy diesel fuel at the truck stop, they're gonna need to buy a hotel room. I mean, if we have that, have South Jacksonville hotels in front of them, when they come to our grounds, it's gonna be easy pickings.
Yeah, exactly. So you want, you're asking for ten thousand for each event, so a total of thirty thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
And like I said, we, we weren't sure what to truly ask for, um, like you say, well, you can pick two events, or, you know, whatever. I don't, however you guys wanna do it, it's, we'll fill off of it, I'm sorry, I didn't know for sure how many copies.
Yeah, no, that's fine, well, you know, we don't have an event of our own anymore, so, you know.
Work with this guy right here, it's probably gonna happen.
Yeah, and that we paid out of tourism about sixty, and then we raised about sixty, so. I mean, I don't look at this as any different than, you know.
Are you getting it, John?
Yeah.
It's no competition with anything we do, cause we don't do anything anymore, but we're getting our name out, and that's the point of tourism.
Um, and, you know, the, with the concerts you guys have experienced, it is, it's kind of a hit miss situation.
Concerts are tough, yeah.
You're booking nine to twelve months in advance, I mean, I'll be honest, I've already asked for pricing for next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And what some of these things are going for is outlandish.
Country acts are expensive now.
Okay.
Country acts are expensive now, but that's what sells around here.
Right.
The, the other thing, we felt like with those three events, we've got a lot more wins, seeing what we can do on our advertising, it's not dictated by contracts.
Right.
Perfect, yes, exactly, cause the concerts have, they have stipulations, yeah, and it changes every year.
Yep, exactly right, so if we get a working relationship with you folks, we can, can do that on year to year without the stipulations of a different act.
That was my next question, if this would pass, would we have first dibs on these three events for next year possibly?
Yes, yes, I, I, I don't think there'd be any issue with that, because, I mean, we, we wanna build a relationship, and we wanna continue it. As long as you folks are, are able to help us, and we're able to help you, we're not looking for anyone else, so. And, and that's why we brought these three events to you, because we felt like these are three areas that we can improve on, that we could build a relationship. And, uh, and really be mutually beneficial to both of us.
Okay.
One big thing that we always strive to do, and we stress this, um, in the different events that we speak at, whether it's our, our gala that we have in February. Whether it's at the four H auction that we have on Monday after the fair, is we have, we have a tremendous amount of support from the community. For our four H, people go above and beyond to support our four H kids, so in return, we always stress the fact that. We buy local, you support local, so, you know, you can talk about, say, for instance, Chevy dealerships, I mean, we have three different Chevy dealerships. That sponsor the fair in some form or. I mean, we have three different Chevy dealerships that sponsor the fair in some form or fashion.
Right.
There's going to be one in New Hampshire, which has been there for forty years, and Green. So, I mean, take your pick, but at least somebody, if you're gonna go look for a car, at least go to one of those three. West Town Ford is another one. I mean, so we really try to stress give back to the local community.
Yeah.
You can't, we're stopping out.
The, the other thing, like, we, we're getting a lot more, uh, businesses from outside the area wanting to come be part of display spaces. If you sound like we're the farmer equipment, we've got car dealerships in there, livestock trailers, livestock equipment, um, fertilizer dealerships, trucking companies, um, we brought in, um, the, uh, Orsh and Bush, the, the sludge company. They, they, they even want a display, you know, they do the waste treatment sludge, uh, application. I mean, it's, it, it's unbelievable. We used to struggle on getting one or two displays. Now we're getting, we, we need more room, really. We have so many people wanting to have displays. And those people are coming, being part of our, uh, different events or part of the concerts, part of the tractor pulls, part of the, um, you know, auction, the four-H auction, and it's really been great, you know. We've had a lot of, a lot of good sport, um, we've got a lot of good kids. I mean, it's just unbelievable, the, the quality of kids that we have in Morton County and agriculture community. They're, they're gonna hopefully stay in with this community. And, um, and I always feel like the, the better showing, the better support of the community you give those kids as they're younger, they're gonna come back and stay in this community.
They're gonna, they're gonna come back to take their turn.
Yeah, I agree.
So, we don't wanna keep taking up time. I know you guys got stuff to do, but.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I for one say we should put this on the agenda and I would move to, you know, or suggest that we do all the thirty thousand. Ten for each event, and then our tourism grant application has a section that we revisit it and we can see if we were happy with what we got for the ten thousand and you, we can have feedback and, and then we decide if we wanna do it again. And it allows for us to have a conversation when it's over.
Right, I, on that, we looked at it. It's tracking that when you, when they check into a hotel out here, do they ask or how do we know how many rooms get used? I mean.
They should.
Okay, I was gonna say, how do you track?
Yeah, they should, but they don't.
Obviously, we, I don't think we can, you know, we're not gonna, we're just staying.
I think we could take it by the weekend, you know, because you've got the weekend, we would possibly see an upswing.
When he's got a baseball tournament, then you don't know, you know, you, obviously there's a lot of competition there, cause he takes up a lot of rooms. Which is, okay, that's great, but, you know, that's the thing, how do you track some of this? Because you know where they came from and so forth.
That's another thing we can improve on, Gary.
Tracking.
Yeah, how we track.
And I think that's, you know, it's great to know and the software we use for, let's say, our, our concert tickets. I mean, tell me how many tickets we bought for Zipco. Cause I mean, last year was.
The other thing that we try to do is if we're feeling like we're missing out on the area, we're, we're trying to figure out how much advertisers that area bring those.
Right.
And sometimes you're not gonna bring those people in, but at least you give them a try. And we try to do it with the radio stations, we do that with our print ads, um, I mean, we're starting to do a lot of your, your, um, oh, I don't know what you call it, geo-tracking or, or boosting on Facebook and all that kind of stuff to try to, try to have for a volunteer organization, we're trying to put as much business effort into it as we can to make it successful.
Yeah, sounds great to me.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Any other questions, let us know.
You can stay for the next hour.
So are we putting this on as an action item?
Yes.
Okay, so then we have a board meeting the first Thursday of each month. And this will be on as an action item, so yeah, it's the next month it will be on, next week. And so you would know if you pay attention to the radio, it would say if it's passed or, I mean, Dick can let you know, I guess, or.
Hey, do you have any questions?
You can bring a little petting zoo out there Thursday.
That's probably not an or, we don't have an ordinance for that.
Gary's kind of been doing that all week.
Five days.
Goat show?
Goat show.
Hundred and forty, hundred and forty fourth graders for five days. Today was our last day, but it's, uh, it's active though, that night around and around, so. But at least it didn't rain. Yeah, yeah, South, South always does.
One of those, that's the cover letter, tourism grant.
This, today we, uh, we have Virginia, we have Beards Town, I mean, Waverly Franklin. I don't know, they just know, a lot, so. But it's good, Dick could see a lot and they learn a lot, so, and they get to be friends, so Fred's a goodie. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
See you guys.
Take care, thank you.
Bye. That's the Judy stuff, that Tiffany ran off that Stacy had.
We've got it in front of us.
Okay, you've got, you've got, you've got everything in front of you.
Yes.
Um, Jacksonville Main Street is, uh, for the fourth year now, going to do a pre-summer conference, March, May thirty-first. Downtown on the square, um, we've had great success with this. It's been very popular as a community event. And, um, this year going into it, we are down about half the budget for the series. Um, two of the grants that we had relied on in past years are no longer available, so, um, it's about a seventy thousand dollar project and we walked into it down about thirty-two thousand five hundred. So, um, we've been scrambling, our sponsorships, we've done very well this year with local sponsorships and regional foundation sponsorships, but, um, we'd like to continue this series. It's a great free community service to the entire community. Um, we have had people come from out of town. I remember a couple of years ago, there was actually a whole group of people that drove all the way from St. Omo to see a band. Um, we're bringing bands in that are not particularly local bands around here, but that are actually, have a following. One band that we're bringing back, they performed, I think, two years ago and they're actually from Portland, Oregon. Um, we have Gabe Marshall, who's probably our biggest local connection. He's coming back up from Nashville. We have another few more, other artists coming from Nashville area, um, some from Wisconsin. And they actually do bring a following. Um, we've had, uh, one band that came from Canada last year and there was a group of people that followed them down from Wisconsin. They're kind of roadies, I guess, is it roadies? Or groupies? Groupies.
All day work.
Okay, it's the people that follow them around and like to listen to them, it's whichever that is. Um, so we have seen multiple people come to the concerts, uh, from out of town. Tracking is a little bit different because it is a free event, um, and we wanna try to keep it a free event. What is great about it is the audience is extremely diverse. It's a true ref- reflection of our entire community. You have, you know, the, the richest of the rich sitting next to some of the poorest of the poor. We've got, um, all different colors, all different developmental levels, ages. It's, it's a wonderful cross-section to see, um, it's a great date night, pre-date night. Well, unless you're really cheap and you won't even buy a sandwich somewhere. It's, um, people bring their families, um, they bring their dogs. It's, it's just a great community event. And so we were just trying to include South Jacksonville and support this year.
What are the options for promoting the village through Main Street?
Did you give them the sponsorship form that was sent in?
Yeah, no, just the tourism, and the village doesn't need like, uh, I know sponsorships were like our concert, beer tickets and things like that, and we don't need any of that stuff. I just mean specifically like.
There's signage at the event.
Okay, signage at the event.
Yeah, there is signage at the event, um, on our website and, um, social media. Um, I think we're doing upwards of fifteen thousand appearances a week on social media now. Um, and so, uh, I believe at the five thousand dollar level, there would be radio mentions. That would be local radio, cause we're shortening up to, we're trimming every, every angle of this. So our Springfield radio advertising, we shortened to fifteen seconds. And I don't wanna sound like that guy at the end of the car commercial that's.
Talks really, really fast?
Yeah, the, the contract, I don't wanna do it that scrunched in, so I don't, I don't know how much of individual sponsorships. It might just say, come to the concerts Friday night, six to nine, downtown Jacksonville. And that might be all we can fit into the fifteen seconds and we're working with them. But there would be local media, um, mentions as well.
I, I just have one comment and, and I, I think you're, you've exaggerated here a little bit. Because what I'm about to say is bringing tens of thousands from there and far downtown. Do you have a thousand, do you have a thousand people ever show up for a concert?
We have had over a thousand people show up for concerts. Um, and this is going into our fourth year of doing it, so it's a cumulative number.
Well, I realize that, but it's.
My, my only comment is if we were to approve this, is that we would need to, uh, in my opinion, is we'd need to forego the drink tickets.
Oh, absolutely.
Just because.
Well, yeah, yeah, we, we couldn't accept, yeah, we couldn't accept those, cause I think that'd be a gift and, and we couldn't give them away.
I agree.
We wouldn't wanna resell them, so.
How many concerts do you have?
We have eight.
Eight?
And we actually skipped the week of the, uh, county fair. And we're also skipping the week of, the weekend nearest to the Fourth of July, because the Fourth of July, I believe, is on a Thursday. And so we're skipping the Fifth, and because we figured what everybody's gonna do is take the next day off and go do something else.
Nap. Nap.
Nap, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna do, they're gonna go see family or they're gonna go on a trip or something.
And this is for fifteen thousand, right, yes.
I think we left a blank and just said over five thousand and it was your discretion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it's.
It's whatever you would like.
Well, and, you know, Dick and I were kind of talking about this. You don't really know what to do, cause it's kind of like we said with the fair. We don't know what is gonna happen, like, and tracking is hard. So it's always good to have the follow-up after and say, hey, did it work? Did we get what we thought we did?
And we do that every year. Um, last year, quite honestly, our numbers were way down because it was ninety-five degrees at eight-thirty at night.
Yeah.
And in the years past.
Well, kind of like the fair, whether sometimes you're washed out and the concerts have bust, unless they pre-serve over at all.
You have no control over it at all. And, and that is the one thing that.
You're at the whim of the weather, aren't you?
Absolutely. I mean, you can get rain insurance, I don't think you can get heat insurance.
Yeah.
I think.
Do you have bands that would stay at our hotels?
Quite possibly. We have requests for hotel rooms. Um, so I mean, that is a possibility, yeah. We are still negotiating things right now. We just sent off the last con- contract, which is why.
So then do you pick? Like, if they want a hotel, do you send them to a hotel? They don't request a certain hotel, right?
Not that I'm aware of requesting a certain hotel.
Cause I'm thinking that might be a way that the village could make sure we get some hotel returns. If we sponsor, then you say, here's your hotels and they're all South Jacksonville.
Well, and it's.
They have four.
Um, a lot of times the rooms are bombed. And so we just reach out and see who's willing to, to work with us. So, yeah, very likely.
They're always great with our concert. They would.
I don't think every band is requesting hotels. I'd have to read up, I'd have to double-check all of the contracts. And then, and it's different amounts of rooms, obviously.
Sure.
Based on the size of the bands.
Sure.
Well, I, this was an action item, but we just need to t- decide what you want as a, a number.
Well, I would request five thousand. If you'd like to give more than five thousand, then be happy to take more than five thousand.
And I think Melissa had said fifteen, so we could go in the middle, we could give ten.
There you go.
You know, I mean, whatever you guys think, cause this is kind of like, I, we, we don't know. You know, we don't know what it's gonna give us back, but I keep thinking of, we always spent sixty on our own concerts and we haven't even spent that yet on events. And I kind of feel like part of our duty is to be good community students.
And this is eight different concerts, so it's eight weeks of exposure.
That's true, we have eight different weeks.
I'm gonna write down five to fifteen thousand.
Okay, and I guess maybe that night, maybe we can think about it and then we can, somebody can make a motion and we can make the amount that night.
We would, when would you be voting on?
Next Thursday.
The third?
I don't know.
So I gotta go to print, like, cause it starts the thirty-first and I mean, we were already pushing this.
Second.
Down to the water. Second?
Yes.
Second?
And we approve it that night, so, um, approve or don't approve, we vote.
Where do you go to print at?
Huh?
Where do you go to print at?
It's local, but we've gotta go like soon.
Yeah.
So that's why I was wondering when a vote would be occurring.
Next week. So you would know one way or the other and those meetings go a lot faster than these meetings. Board meetings are fast.
That's cause we're here tonight.
That's right.
All right, now we're ready for John, he left the room.
Can I go now?
You may.
Yes, you can.
I'm gonna sneak out.
Your company isn't lovely, so.
Yeah, I really, or you could've gone really early. You were at the C D's, it's very.
Yeah, thank you.
I was gonna say, Wiley's gonna join, can I speak to you for a minute?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Do you want me to wave?
Okay, guys, this is Jamie Headen with Benton Associates. I'll make it really quick here. Some of you know.
Well, can you hold on a second?
They told me to go.
Oh, who told you to go?
Harry.
Oh, okay, well then never mind. I didn't want him to.
No, I appreciate it. As you know, we're growing and growing. The EPA has been asked for, after us for years. It's always been a finding that we don't have enough stories, water stories. The reason we're getting away with it is because we have an interconnect with the city, but we need a tower. Um, Love said give us a lot, a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty for the purpose of a, an extra tower eventually when we're ready. The motel's out there as it is now, and you're on the third floor, there's not much water pressure on weekends when they're all full, because your, your pressure comes, is a function of elevation. So when you're on the third floor, that's making the tower thirty foot small, shorter. Um, all this, having said all this, our telemetry, which runs our water plant, um, it's, that's a long story. We need a new system. And this, tonight is no decisions. This is gonna be a year-long process to get things in place. Jamie has put together a presentation which will show us what kind of money we're looking at, what kind of money we can get in, um, loan forgiveness from the EPA. Um, he's just here to present. Um, like I said, tonight is not about making a decision. There's gonna be a lot, lot of meetings on this. This is just one of many. So, uh, Jamie, if you'll take it from there, buddy.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Yeah.
Should I wait till, till they get back in or?
I'd get started, I don't, he said to go ahead, like I said, we're gonna have.
Kill this mark.
Yep, sure can.
And thanks for waiting around, by the way.
It's the other, the other piece, yeah.
Next one, next one, there you go.
You're not an electrician.
Yeah, you're not an electrician.
Yeah, it's, uh, John, thank you. Um, if some of you don't know me, my name's Jamie Headen with Benton Associates. I'm Vice President of Water and Waste Water. Um, that's kind of my primary focus, um.
Hey, Jamie. Not to interrupt you.
Yeah, sure.
Just so you guys know, he knows what he's doing. He just come off of a how many year project with the city for their water plant. I mean, he, he knows water systems and plants and towers and, I mean, that is his specialty.
Thank you. Uh, the thing I'm passing out here, we'll get this, we'll get to this kind of just down the road.
It went very well, for my sake, cause I worked with that guy.
The insulation was bad, we gotta fix all that.
Well.
Harry, I just kind of told him, like, this was one of many projects, uh, meetings on this, this is the start. Thank you.
Thank you all for everything. Have a blessed evening.
You too, bud, see ya.
See you.
Bye.
Well, in, in interest of time, um, I'll try to go through it quickly, but I don't wanna go through it so fast that we miss some details. There's a lot of little details that I don't have maybe specifically in here, but I want this, if possible, to be a good discussion. After a couple hours of discussion, you guys might be kind of worn out with that, but, so I'll, I'll kind of go through some stuff. We are gonna cover, um, kind of what the system looks like. If, uh, we have some new, some new board members and I guess if I can get a show of hands, who's been down to the water plant and wells that's on the board? Well, that's, that's good. So some of this stuff may be kind of new, so I, uh, I'm a picture learner, so everything I do involves a lot of pictures.
That's cool.
Yeah, um, so we'll go ahead and go through the water system components and then. Yeah. So, we'll go ahead and go through the water system components and then talk about the facility planning and the needs assessment. John, you mentioned some of the needs right now. We'll kind of tend to focus on the elevated storage tank and the telemetry, which is the control system, what turns the pumps on and off. There are some other needs, but we'll kind of go through some of the things you guys did before, going on twenty years ago now. And then you'll find these, these improvements tend to happen on about twenty, thirty-year cycles. Whether it be the infrastructure portion just sort of falling off on as far as their useful life or a regulation change. And the good news is you don't have a lot of regulatory drivers right now, but as John mentioned earlier, you may have more down the road. Item three, project cost. We're gonna use some sample items for some projects. Don't be scared by the numbers. We just gotta pick something and go with it, so at least that gives us an opportunity to figure out what, what the needs might be. And then I passed out an infrastructure funding review. Those are three sources that we'll go through that are typical infrastructure funding and how the village qualifies. Maybe as compared to even last year, when it changes, as you know, it changes a lot over the years. And then implementation plan. So, and as I go, if anybody has any questions, please stop me. The system components, right now, there's, there's two wells. There used to be two wells before, wells one and two, and, and John, correct me as I go if I mess up on this stuff. Wells one and two were abandoned, now well three and four are in operation. Those are, those wells are down below Oxbow, and the plant is just east of Oxbow there. So, from the wells, the water's pumped through a twelve-inch raw water main to the raw water tanks and into the filtration plant. And at the, at the treatment plant, raw water enters there, is pumped from the high-service pumps through the filters and then leaves the building. And from the building, then it goes through the transmission main to the interchange softening, which is the old filter building, just down the way, up the, up the hill. And then the elevated water storage tank, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons, and volume will become a, a topic here pretty soon. You know, the old distribution system may have just kind of been the old part of town, but now we've sort of headed south. So, from, from a picture standpoint, let's imagine that's down by the interstate for tonight. And as John mentioned earlier, the SCADA system, supervisory control and data acquisition, telemetry. That's what tells the pumps to kick on, to fill the tank, and the wells to kick on, and lets John and others know what's going on in the system too. Alarms, so you can take care of items. Your wells are in, you'll hear them called shallow sand and gravel aquifer near the Illinois River. We're talking about these crosshatched lines here. Kind of see, it's got kind of pretty much anywhere in the Illinois River bottom, you're gonna find plenty of water. And when we say shallow, we're talking about a hundred feet or less typically.
One's seventy-eight, one's eighty-one.
Yeah. Very typical Illinois River bottom wells. Usually Illinois River bottom wells are moderately hard, so probably four or five hundred parts of hardness. Which, if you had to, you know, I don't know what you're softening to right now, John, but, you know, usually you want it between a hundred and a hundred and fifty at your home. If you go to hotels, sometimes you get down to the eighty and ninety range, it's a little bit like- Too soft? A little slimy, some would say. Too many suds. So, plenty of water down there, usually has iron and magnesiums though. Each well, John mentioned, about eighty feet deep, so there's a casing with a screen at the bottom. Usually there's about twenty feet of screen, and around that screen is a gravel pack, which keeps some of the stuff from getting into it. And that's what one of those screens look like, looks like at the bottom. They're slotted stainless steel screen typically. All the water enters the well and is pumped out to the treatment plant. If you travel down seventy-two, you look off to the north, see well three and four. Like little grain bins there up on a platform. I have a lot of people ask me what those things are. Unfortunately, they do tend to be targets sometimes. Transmission main pass the old, the old treatment plant there and then up the hill to the existing water treatment plant. And one thing I want to point out too, because John mentioned elevation too and how, how the whole pressure thing works. Our, our biggest horsepower, biggest energy draw is the fact that we have to boost water, you know, all this elevation. So, we're going up from about four-hundred-and-thirty actually water level, probably, you know, in the, in the upper three hundreds all the way up to about five-hundred-and-seventy-five at the treatment plant. So, we have quite a bit of elevation coming out of the bluff, and then outline coming out of the bluff, but coming from the plant to the elevated water storage tank. And that's where usually your biggest energy draw is. If you get a chance to go down to the plant, you'll enter at the front door there, which is right there. Inside the building is the filters, that's a picture of the filter going through the garage door when it was first installed, and that's that. The filter itself has four different cells. That's, this, the primary function of this unit is to remove iron and magnesiums. The raw water enters the raw water tanks before it goes to the filters, and then out back is red water filters. Backwash water, when you clean the filters, goes through here and then is discharged to the creek. Again, with the elevation changes, this is a profile from, all the way from the wells to the grounds, ground level of the elevated storage tank up the hill here. So, you can see we start way down at the wells, plants on top, and then we continually rise from down at Oxbow to about where the, the tank is here in town. And that's the transmission main. And then there's a couple of things not shown here, that would be a Scott County rural water connection, and then the Exeter Merritt connection and the Lindell connection.
So, the village gets revenue off of selling water to those communities who-
It do. The Lindell connection, who also, I guess West Morgan Water also gets water, that happens, been there for a while. Scott County rural water, about, what, ten years now, maybe?
Probably eight.
Eight or so, yeah, those are, both of those, both the rural waters are kind of last ten years or so. Exchange softening, just a quick, quick little lesson on that. It's really exactly like your home softeners, if anybody has additional softening at home. These units inside of the old building, new units we're putting in rehab. Inside those units is resin, and you charge the resin with a sodium-rich water, and as your calcium and magnesium comes through, you lose the sodium and it likes the calcium and magnesium better, and that's what takes the hardness out of the water.
Is that, is that the plant over on, by the water tower?
Yep, this is the old building from nineteen sixty-eight.
Okay, we're not talking about Oxbow, we're talking about the-
Right.
Nineteen sixty-eight?
Good question, thank you, I think that's right here, nineteen sixty-eight.
Right in there, yeah.
So, it's new.
Right.
It's a new building.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's one of our newest.
Good question. And this building used to have the filters in it and the old, you'll hear Z O light softening. Now it's called interchange, it's slightly different, but they were rehab that building and now it's just softening on the way to the plant. So periodically, you have to regenerate those beds. There's a salt brine pumps that pump the salt brine back through the, the softeners and then off to the sewer system with the, with the spent waste. So, the customers along the way probably don't get softened water, like my, I grew up in Wendell and my mom and dad still live there. The water's just right from the filtration plant there. Folks in town mostly get softened water, maybe at different, different levels. As a reminder too, softening is not an EPA requirement, it's an aesthetics thing. Of course, most communities would want it, but it also comes into corrosivity and things like that. It contributes to the quality of that as well. So, the operational sequence, kind of how the system works. John's down here flushing the hydrant. That's gonna cause a demand on the system, which draws the elevated storage tank down. Eventually, the telemetry's gonna call the treatment plant to turn the pump on. That's gonna pump water through, the whole system to try to fill that again, but by that pump turning on, the raw water tank's now empty. Telemetry calls one of the wells to come on, those fill back up, this fills back up, and all is back to normal. So, it kind of goes through that setup every single day, including Christmas. Every day, all the time, that's the rule about the water system.
Have the wells ever gone dry?
No.
Haven't gone dry, they do tend to, and these are any wells in those bottoms, they'll tend to-
Weather-related from a severe drought, one of-
It's the beauty of wells.
The, the good thing is they're, like you said, they're riverbed, basically wells.
Running water riverbed.
Exactly, they're pulling off the aquifer underneath the river. I mean, if you, if they went down, you got bigger problems.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the great thing about, especially Illinois or Mississippi River bottom wells, there's a lot of water. Now, you may not like, like all the water, may have high nitrates, which has been a problem in the past. That's why some of the wells were abandoned before, it was nitrates.
That's why we get those reports every year, right?
C C R reports, yes.
Right. Yep.
We have to clean the well out every round then, because they'll slow down.
Right.
They do.
Ones do this year.
Yep. So, John, what are you pumping from the wells right down? Flow rate?
Flow rate, around five hundred gallon a minute.
Right. Same from the plant to town?
Well, actually about five and a, about five and a quarter from the wells to the high service, about five hundred from the high service to town. So, we got about twenty-five gallon a minute buffer, so we're not going under, we keep coming up.
Stay ahead.
Right.
Yep. And then, okay. So, as we look through here, Paula made a note, nineteen sixty-eight, forty cows. And sometimes, in terms of water system components, that's actually a young component.
Really?
Yeah, like pipes, for example, you know, they have a useful life of eighty years plus. I mean, there's, in, in our, in our water organizations that we're in, there's a hundred-year pipe club. There's cast fiber pipe that's been in the ground forever. Now, it may not be the greatest shape all the time, but it can last for a while. Whereas SCADA systems and telemetry might have a useful life of maybe fifteen years. You know, it's computers, you know how our computers have to be changed out really frequently. So, to kind of expand on what John was saying earlier, some of this stuff, we, we sort of need to look at on a periodic basis. Whether it be regulatory change, capacity change, or maybe you have a community that's growing in different areas and/or types of users. Maybe we don't have as many residences, maybe we have some big multi-story hotels now, and all of a sudden our flow rate-
This is probably jumping way ahead. Using that, that right there. If you go putting up another, wait, two-hundred-and-fifty gallon, two-hundred-and-fifty thing, man.
About five-hundred thousand.
Five-hundred thousand gallon, how much more stuff are you gonna have to add to make this thing work?
Yep, we'll go through that.
Okay.
Yep.
See, you are jumping ahead. Stay with the program.
I am, but, good question, and keep on kind of-
He's the worst kind of student.
Oh, no.
Yeah, to ask him.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you something else too. You go down there on Friday when they backflush this.
No.
You'll never make this water again.
Really? Oh, great. Then I'm not going down there.
It's not good looking.
What goes on behind the scenes?
Yeah, we don't need to know.
No, you don't want to know.
John makes sure that whatever happens there, every-
That's right.
And that, it's impressive, I think.
Quite a, I love how you've done this, makes it easier to understand.
Yeah, helps me too.
Your wife's a teacher, that's why.
Yeah, probably. So, if we give ourselves a report card periodically, that happens in a few ways. Things fall apart. John has to go through EPA inspections every three years. John, I don't remember when the last one you had.
It's coming up pretty close.
Coming up pretty close, and in that inspection, they're probably gonna go, hey, your, your usage is about four-hundred-something thousand a day, and you only have two-hundred-and-fifty in store.
We get dinged every time.
Yeah. And do you have a, a violation right now? No. No. It's probably an attachment B, most likely.
Attachment B, yes.
The EPA evaluation monitors are set up in attachment A, attachment B, attachment A are, here are things that you need to fix and you need to tell me how fast you're gonna do it. Otherwise, violation. Attachment B are, here's things that might end up in A down the road, but we're giving you a heads up. So, we're looking for any deficiencies. It's a good idea for capital improvement and budgeting, somebody mentioned budgeting earlier. If you do asset management, you know, assigning useful life to everything and being able to forecast when those assets are gonna come out of their useful life is important. And then trying to figure out too, if any, any improvements you need to make can be phased. You know, not everything has to happen at one time, and sometimes you gotta attack it in multiple phases so you can maximize your funding opportunity. And then, it takes a while. These aren't things we go to the hardware store and buy, they take a while to get going. So, in two thousand, around late nineties, two thousand, two thousand one, the village did go through a facilities planning process. You'll hear the term facility plan a lot. That's kind of like the business plan, if you go to the bank, you need money, you need to have a business plan, generally speaking. Facility plan is kind of the same way for your water system and/or sewer system. You have to put one together if you need funding from an outside source. So, in the, in the two thousands, this is what kind of system looked like. These were down below Oxbow, actually, well, one and two were in service. There was an aerator to oxidize the iron that was pumped up through the, the building just down the road here. The filters were on the right, softeners were on the left, into the tank. As part of that facility planning process, the recommendations were new supply wells, and that was completed. Raw water tank to the water treatment plant were both completed. Rehabbing the filter plant and a new SCADA system. So, all that was done, and in fact, there was phase two of that plan as well, which included a five-hundred-thousand gallon tank, any connecting mains, to speak to your good question earlier. And then control valves for the existing tank and a booster pump station, which may or may not need it, I'll go into some of those details. So, this stuff is already completed, and it has a good build health for a while, except for SCADA, and then these didn't get done earlier. So, I, I guess a good question, do we, do we need it now? I mean, it's a lot of money. We really gotta ask ourselves, how important is some of this stuff if we don't have a violation? Do we really need it for regulatory requirements, you know, or other needs? Let's look at our historical water production over the years here. When they did the planning in the, in two thousand, we'll say, up to that point, from the sixties up to two thousand, water production was between a hundred thousand gallons increased a little over three-hundred thousand gallons. And at that time, if you use a one percent growth projection, it was assumed that, you know, by twenty forty, we're gonna be in the six, or the five-hundred-thousand gallon range. If we look where we're at around twenty-twenty right now, we see we're about four fifteen, four twenty-five thousand gallons a day. John, average day, what are we pumping now?
Four and a quarter to four fifty. I mean, really, and that's off-season, it just goes, skyrockets from, from then on.
Right.
I mean-
During flushing and other things like that, it can really crank out.
Oh, yeah, and, and another month and a half, you'll see that go to five hundred every day, and then by midsummer, you'll see it, you'll see days bouncing off of six hundred thousand. Five seventy-five to six hundred thousand. That's turning the tower over two and a half times.
Right. In one day.
In one day.
So, we're using production and, and demand as interchangeable same term?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
For this case, I'm using production, but it's an odd, another good point is when we talk about what we're producing versus what we're selling. Of course, it would those to be as close as we can to each other, but for this, we're just talking about production. How much do we got, how much has to leave the door of the water plant? Interesting thing, in nineteen ninety-nine, at least according to records, there was about seventeen hundred customers. That could've been some other customers included, and we're around fifteen hundred water, fifteen-ten, am I wrong?
Well, we have, we have about fif, we sent out about fifteen hundred and twenty water bills a month. But then you've got a lot, that's just our billing, then you've got rural Scott County, you've got Renville, West Morgan, and Exeter Merritt, which, which is a, which is one meter, but they, I mean, we're serving a lot more than what we're-
Which is exactly the point, is that a system is what it was twenty years ago.
Right.
And now the system's different. You may be producing the same or a little bit more water, but your, your type of usage has changed. You now have a bunch more hotels, you know, that's, that's one customer.
Right.
But a weekend of that one customer could really, you know, really get you. And so, all the rural waters, it's one customer, but it's, you know, thousands of customers.
Just for instance, one customer in rural Scott County's two million gallons a month.
Right.
You know.
So, if we just look at customers, that, it doesn't always tell the whole story, so I just wanted to point that out to you. So, what are we required to do? The EPA has a requirement for at least, where systems not providing fire protection shall be equal to an average daily consumption. Production, consumption, that's a little spoiler there. But I always use what we're producing from the plant, because that's what you have to put out in the system, because the system could have some leaks. Leaks are like the worst water customer ever. They go all the time and they never pay. But you have to make the water, though, to make it happen. It says also, though, this may be reduced when the source of treatment facilities have sufficient capacity with standby power and supplement peak demand. So, there's some facilities that'll have, you know, two ground storage tanks at the plant, a standby generator, which you do have at the plant, and also some additional pumps. So, they may not want all that storage in the air, and maybe they want it down at the treatment facility. But in your case, where you have more, the distribution system is your biggest demand. Having that water in the air, ready to go in case of, I say kind of the week-long ice storms about your worst one. Because those, those are situations where you can't really get down to the plant as well. You may have some things that are actually broken, maybe, you know, wind, ice, whatever, and it tends to coat the whole area as well. Tornado or something goes through one spot, a big ice storm usually is a whole region technically. So, whereas we do have some raw water tanks down at the plant that you could kind of say that sort of adds in, it really doesn't. It's really not finished water ready to go. So, let's look at the scorecard. Our elevated tanks, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons. If our minimum required is four hundred to five hundred, then we're about two fifty short right now. I think, you know, you do have a backup connection with the city, which is great. That's one of the better backup connections most people have, a lot of people would like to have that and don't. So, you do have some leeway there. So, now what's required, but what- So know what's required, but what's your goals? You sort of gotta look at each other and say, are we trying to supply a certain amount of fire protection for our newly established hotels and improve for the residents? You know, what, what's our demand changes that have happened over the years? Maybe we have some, I don't wanna say the L-word, but situations on water mains where you gotta address every once in a while. Maybe you want a little more in there to...
Let me interrupt you for a minute.
Sure.
What you guys also need to remember is, like he just hit on, was fire protection. ISO, which is a rating, that rating affects everybody in here's house insurance premiums. And the lower the score, the better it is. And that's one thing, that's, our system is what they call the, the hydraulics of it. They're, they're not gonna change. You know, we're not gonna go through and put bigger mains throughout the whole village to have more water volume at that point. So, the only thing that we can do at this point to change it would have more on sto, more on hand, which would be another talent.
I'm sure they'd lose a lot of points.
Yes.
On their ISO rating for this.
Our fire rating is a six, am I correct on that?
I think it's a six.
What's the city, Ty?
Four or five, I don't even know.
So, I mean, it's, it, it affects, it affects a lot of things, but that is one of them that affects everybody, you know. I mean, you and your house, I don't mean you don't care, but as Joe, customer, you don't care if the plant was forty-four hours a day. You know, when you turn the tap on, there's water.
Exactly.
But you would care if you knew that it would help your insurance rates.
Sure.
Now, we're not talking huge money, that's not the point. We want that, we want that ISO rating as low as we can get it, so, sorry to interrupt you, but when you said fire protection, I wanted, everybody know that, that's another facet of, facet of it.
Because that's what our residents will understand.
Exactly.
There's the fire rating, but then there's just the practical nature of it. When you have a two or three-story, you know, fire going on, I'm, I'm not a fireman, but I just get a lot of, you get a lot of feedback, and if you can't open, if you really get after it, it just really affects, you know, your ability to get the job done, which could affect Greg's house that we're talking about.
Exactly.
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
Then you will care.
Yeah, definitely will care.
I'm there as the example person for the presentation.
That's fine by me.
Well, his house burned down because it's too close to mine.
Now we have friends.
When, when I'm on the porch, I'm gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
So for the sake of discussion, and to kind of walk our way through, well, okay, let's, let's in theoretical mode, imagine that we do wanna do something about it, well, how in the world do we even start? Because that's usually the, how, how, how do we start, and how long's it gonna take to finish? In the planning process, we'll look at alternatives. Do nothing, that actually is an option. Sometimes you, you go through things and you go, well, now's not really the right time, or you rank something else a little bit higher. Mentioned earlier, ground storage tanks at the water treatment plant or another location. You could put a ground storage tank, you know, at your existing tank and boost that. There's all sorts of different things you can do. A new tank at, at the existing tank location, you know, sometimes you go to towns that have two tanks right next to each other, hydraulically, that's nice and easy. If you're, if you're me, all the mains are already there, water levels work well together, if it's the right spot, depending on the demand centers. Or a new tank at a new location. Because that's been mentioned earlier, and because we do have property down there, we have a new demand center south, let's kind of go down that route for tonight, for discussion. So a new tank at a new location, we're just gonna talk about the, the site there by Loves. It's kind of dedicated for that, so it works well for our talk. We do have to have some design considerations, and Dick, I think this kind of goes to what you're talking about earlier. Supply hydraulics is an important thing. If you have two tanks right next to each other, fed by the same main, those water levels are gonna raise pretty much equally, most of the time. All of a sudden, if you have a, a tank way down the way, and elevations are different, and now you have one tank with a huge pipeline supplying it, and the wee little pipelines down there to these other ones, those flow rates are not gonna be the same, and that one's not gonna fill the same. One's gonna fill up quick, they're just gonna do this, the one's gonna fill up fast, and this other one's just gonna do this over time. That water's gonna get really old, and you're not gonna do well in operation, and John's gonna be slamming his head against the wall. And it's not gonna give us what we want, which is storage in those demand centers. So you gotta think about how the water gets into these tanks. High water level, keep existing or increase? Are we happy with the pressures in town? Not in some places, we got some low spots. Yeah, so how high do we go? We have multi-story buildings now, the southern area, but I think we also have some, some high elevation areas getting to the tank that have had pressure problems in the past. Tank mixing and water quality, you'll, John will probably be getting notified, I guess, chlorine change is gonna happen soon. I think you're right, next couple of months, I believe anyways. Minimum chlorine residuals right now are point-two milligrams per liter for free chlorine, point-five for total. The free chlorine minimum residual's gonna go from point-two to point-five, and total's gonna go from point-five to one. Seems like a small little change, but this is ma, basically, an outcome of the Legionella stuff that's going on.
Which just sort of by those, normally our minimum right now that we've run is a point-five-oh. We come out of the plant at one-point-three, we're usually a point-five-oh, point-six-oh in town. It's really not gonna change much on us.
Right.
We may have to bump that up a little bit, but for us, that's about where we're at now anyway, so it's really not gonna...
Right. That's a good, and it's well water, well water's usually more stable, has less organics in it as it gets out in the system. But that's something we gotta think about, is, is water quality and mixing, and then redundancy during operation when we take one out of service. Sometimes design considerations related to geotechnical can be a big cost item. Deep foundations for these huge tanks with all the seismic requirements can really add up on cost. I think in this case, we're probably okay. And then tank style, you know, which one are we gonna look at? So, let's kind of go through some of the, uh, supply hydraulics. I have a bit of a cartoon map here, John, I kind of, hopefully I'm roughly close. Supply to the tank and to the system is from the ten-inch main from the water treatment plant, and then we have the tank here. The system is, for the most part, kind of set up in four-inch grids on the old part of town, plus or minus.
Right.
I'm, I'm not showing every single water main here, of course, with kind of a six-inch loop around the outside of the grids and down at the bottom of the ledge, and four-inch, six, eight, and ten, the different colored ones. Pretty much four-inch here, but down south, it's, it's kind of fed by a eight-ish inch loop, for the most part, and then some of the new areas down here have a, have a six-inch grid. So the question is, if we put a new tank at that site, I don't know if I have it exactly on the right spot, is this eight-inch enough to fill? Well, we know that tank's gonna be very preferred hydraulically, and odds are, without some supplement, haven't done, you know, the, the numbers and stuff yet, this one's not gonna fill very well. But also, unless the demand here is very high, it also may not drain very well. So we gotta think about that, too. John, I know, I mean, we have some demand down there, but, you know, the bulk of town is, will be pulling out of this tank.
What's the difference in elevation between the old and the proposed?
That's the next one.
God's sakes, Dick.
Paying attention.
I'm gonna ask that question.
I was waiting, I was waiting.
Yeah, so the question is...
See, Jason knows, he waits, you just go ahead.
Keep asking, that's the point. Throw him out there, sees I'm wrong, throw that out there, too. So, do we need to connect with some larger mains? When we did the facility planning in there early two thousands, hydraulically, yes, the answer was, we need to have some other connections. I think at that time, though, this other eight-inch wasn't installed, if I remember right. So, we'll need to look at that again and see if these mains can be utilized to fill that, fill that tank. And then, we get an elevation, somebody might ask. Who, I guess, how, how much elevation difference do you think that site is at ground level versus the tank? Anybody have a guess?
I'd say it'd be less, for sure, wouldn't it?
Lower in elevation at the new tank site? It's about fifteen feet lower.
That's not a lot.
Plus or minus fifteen and a half or so, and that's ground level. So new tanks, the old tanks around here, of course, we go down in the, in the creek by the ditch, and then we're up here to our new tank site. So that's, that's enough to worry about, or at least to think about, if you go into some systems that have multiple tanks and they have different water levels, the operators don't enjoy that all the time. So what do you think about it? So let's think about this a little bit harder. Do we stay with our existing level here, or do we increase? If we put the same height of tank here as we do at the new site, that new site's gonna overflow a lot. Loves is gonna have, well, that, that storm pond's gonna be full a lot. That's not gonna be good. So, if we can change it out and go the same, that's, you know, that's something to think about. Or do we want to have this tank actually be higher? Sometimes if you have needs, fire flow, let's say, or different types of demand down in a certain area, you can have pressure zones, so you can actually go down and fill that tank and have it just serve a certain area. But, if we have areas of town that already have some pressure issues, we're not really gonna help that much, because if we raise this tank up, and we have, let's say, a booster pump and a pipe, and we fill it, and then we just allow it to drain back in the system, what's gonna happen is, you're gonna fill this up, and it's gonna fill that tank back immediately. These tanks are just gonna go like that all the time. It's not only wasting energy, it just doesn't work very well, you're just constantly trading flow. So setting the right elevation is an important part of the design. Tank style, right now you have a leg tank, which you find are usually pretty cost-effective to install. If you've seen some of the larger tanks, usually your million gallon tanks are called a hydro color. What's that, sorry?
Springfield's got one like that along one-seventy-two, interstate seventy-two.
Yeah, they also have a, a big old stand pipe there as well. Beers Town has a, a tank like that, Taylorville, if you go through those communities. Usually your million gallon, that's called a hydro color. This is kind of the same style of tank, but this, the bottom's a composite. If you go to Springfield, look to the south, in Kern, there's a composite tank there, it's really light, light colored on the top. Sometimes those are most cost-effective, we just had a project in Kirchfield, Missouri, that, that a couple of months ago, and it composite tank was the most cost-effective in that case.
Can, can you have a dedicated line for usage out of one tank only? Or is that, is that stupid to do that?
You can do, pretty much, yeah, but that's three slides down.
That's three slides down.
And, and, explain a little bit more what you're thinking.
If you put a new tank out there, and you would cut off lines, you're gonna have to feed it, of course. But then you would have a designated area if that tank would only...
Pressure zone.
That's what he was talking about, when he said zones a minute ago, that's what he was getting at. You could isolate it to a special, certain zone.
Right, right, so if, if we put the tank down there, and we had it higher, let's say the same as the existing elevated tank, or maybe even higher, because you want fire flow even more down there, you can have its own little pressure zone down there. What I'm concerned about is, though, we need five-hundred-thousand gallons additional storage to get where we need to go, but that's for the whole town. We put five-hundred-thousand gallons down there, and then we only let, let's say, Zodiac South use it, it's not gonna get used.
Wouldn't make any sense.
The demands, so then we go to the demand centers. Who's pulling the water? Where is that demand center coming from? And then you start thinking, well, maybe is that the right place for it or not? So, things you gotta figure out during the design process. Odds are, in this size, you're probably gonna be in, they call these a spheroid level. It's about the most cost-effective in this size, it's more vandal resistant, it's hard to climb that. Later in life, as far as recoding, it's most cost-effective as well. Even think about recoding all these nooks and crannies versus a guy hanging on the side of this and blasting and all that stuff. It's just a little more cost-effective later on. None of them are cheap, though, I'm just warning you, that's three slides down.
I'm jumping way ahead. Is that the best place? Is that where you recommend putting another tank, or somewhere else?
I don't know that answer right now.
Okay.
I'm...
Because we're not married...
If you just showed me a map and said, I want a tank here, and I want a tank way down at the end, I'm gonna go, show me a huge demand down there. Because usually when you put a tank at the end of the system, it goes in there, and the water goes back up, and it goes like that, and it goes like that, and the water quality goes down.
Because we're not married to that situation.
Yeah, exactly, right, right. It's a, I mean, it'd be awesome to come down the interstate and see this big old South Jacksonville logo on the side of the tank. If Loves wants to pay for it, put a big heart and paint it yellow, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah.
That's not in any minutes, is it? Speaking freely. I'm not sure it's the best spot, though, for the total system. The other thing that you can do is, you can actually raise these tanks. They can chop these legs off and add twenty feet to them. But, foundations are a huge issue there. If you can do it, that's one way to improve it. Now, let's say we raise this twenty feet, and this guy goes up twenty feet, and all of a sudden we have this nice water level, it's twenty feet higher, you know, we got five or six PSI more. John's pumping from the plant, now his pressure's gotta be higher in order to get water in the tank. So, okay, our transmission main gets a little grumpy sometimes, you need to think about those operating pressures and really decide if that's gonna be the right choice. But all these things are fleshed out, they're in the, the design, the hydraulic modeling, and we can, you know, we can do that. So for fun, we're gonna do the new tank at the new location. Caution, number of zeros is exactly as it appears. I talked to John, we went through kind of a, like bookends of costs. Well, what's the least that it could be, and what's the good lord the most that it can be? So, elevate, the, the main bulk of the tank, of the cost here is the tank. The tank's about one-and-a-half million of that. If you have about four-hundred-thousand dollars of, of foundations, you know, if, if the soils are good, you could have less than that in foundations. But, that's probably in, in the range right now. Site work is wherever you end up putting it, drainage, you know, culvers, things like that, you're gonna connect to some water mains. Some additional things that can sneak up on you during tank construction. Deep foundations, if you have to add a little more on the foundations, deep piles, whatever, that can get you. Especially coatings, you get through a project, and all of a sudden, comes time to pick the color. Good times. Hey, let's do this huge logo, thirty-five grand, ooh, that sounds funny more. So I like to talk about it now, if the, you know, if you have a very visible place, oh, it's a big ol' ugly water tank, might as well make it look nice. I mean, but it's, it's up to you. You, you can use elevated storage tanks for communication devices as well. I would just caution you that whoever you get with that, you have very stout contracts with them, because when John has to rehab that tank later, you need to move that when you need to move it, not when they wanna get there to move it. And when it's down, you should be responsible for any of that loss of whatever is on that tank. New SCADA system, this is one of the needs John mentioned. That's probably the high, we could probably be less than that, it's all about how many choices you want. You know, do you want a whole lot of detail, do you wanna know exactly what's going on in the whole system? But that's to control the whole system. Transmission main, this is probably one of the biggest wild cards, these two right here. Do we need a ten-inch or an eight-inch or whatever main to connect to that tank? If the tank's not down by the interstate, no, we need a lot less transmission main. And we probably don't need the pump station. But this'll give you the bookends, ten percent contingency, non-construction costs includes facility planning, funding application, legating, legal, interest during construction, they want us to put that in there now, and permits. Usually non-construction costs are anywhere from eighteen to twenty-five percent. Depending if you have to buy property or easements, you know, it's very, pretty variable, but odds are you'll be in that ballpark. So here's our bookends of costs. And I'm gonna pick kind of a middle value to say, to move forward for our discussion. So let's look at our funding options. And I'm sorry, Mary, so you're writing those down? I have handouts, if anybody wants some.
Yeah, would love that. I was actually gonna ask if you could email me this whole...
Thank you.
Your whole, uh...
I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to.
I just, I caution you, four million dollars scares people.
What did City of Jacksonville cost? Twenty-seven million?
One or two more.
Oh, their water plant?
Sea source, it's nothing.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five million?
Didn't they end up over thirty-five?
Yeah, the water plant itself was about twenty-eight or so.
What was their, the new blue tank they put out there?
Were you involved in that? I don't remember what that one cost.
That's on Massey View?
Three million gallons stand pipe. I don't remember what that cost, didn't check it.
So then we just get some more harvest stores and put them down there?
Good. And there's no more tanks. What you gotta, what, what you wanna watch out with stand pipes, though, that's a lot of water sitting there. In your usable volumes, you're up a third. That's where, you know, you're, you're headed, what, the, your pressure's defined as how much water is above you. Two-point-three-one feet of water equals one pound per square inch on pressure gauge. So...
God, I'm glad you know all this stuff.
Because you're making it up.
Yeah, I'm believing you, I'm believing everything he's saying, good job.
I'm writing that down, too. Could be making it up.
I'm sorry, I'm not too serious.
You're not too serious.
Infrastructure funding options. There is an option. Gave you a handout, that's the one with the three funding options on the right. There has been some changes in the last year with the LPA SRF Launchers Sloth Program, and that's the program that you use to get, get the wells and water treatment plant built out in the early two thousands. That's changed over the years. I'd say last time it was the most cost-effective and the best was two thousand nine, if you remember the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. They had a program, their loan program there had zero percent interest and twenty-five percent principal forgiveness. When we say principal forgiveness, it's pretty much grant. They'll loan you a certain amount, and then you just don't have to pay back a certain amount of it. I still don't know why they call it that, but whatever works, as long as it's... I still don't know why they call it that, but whatever works, as long as you don't have to pay it back, right? So how does South Jacksonville stack up on the, on the funding side? Your median household income, according to American Fact Finder, you can find this on the internet, is around fifty-two thousand, four eighty-six. As you compare to the statewide of sixty-one, two twenty-nine, that puts you about eighty-five percent of the statewide median household income. The reason why I'm checking that, I'd like it if it was seventy percent or less. Make it a little bit better on funding, but you're still gonna be doing pretty good. Standard loan terms for next year for the EPA is probably gonna be around two and a quarter percent for a twenty-year loan. Their historical program has been two and a half, two point six percent. It's usually half of the open bond market. That's kinda how they define their program. With your population, you qualify for the small community rate at one point six nine percent, which is seventy-five percent of their normal programs. That's good. If you compare back to the water treatment plant project, does anybody remember it was like two point four percent maybe?
Right, right in there.
Yeah, so if we look back historically, these are pretty darn good terms. But I'd say the coolest thing that they changed last summer was principal forgiveness potential is up to seventy-five percent of project costs for disadvantaged communities not to exceed one and a half million. Okay, well, does this make us disadvantaged? Thankfully by your population, by population and if you qualify for hardship, they're calling all those communities disadvantaged. So we'll take that. So if we had a million dollar project, we can get up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. And if you have two million dollar project, you get up to one and a half million.
They're capped at that, right?
Three million dollar project, you can only get up to one and a half million. If you had a five million, it's only one and a half million. Kinda get where the, where the top is. So this kinda makes us think about strategy. Well, if we have five million dollars of projects, I wonder if we can bust these up in phases over multiple fiscal years, you know, something like that. I also wanna warn you too, these are the terms for this year and I think they're gonna be the terms for next year. After that, you know, nobody in this room has control over it. These are better than they've been for a long time. And if I was here last year at the same time, this wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have this conversation. So it can change. The loan program, as you can imagine, is under pretty good pressure because of some of these terms. But if you talk to the folks over there, it's not necessarily under pressure just because of this. You have Chicago that'll have a hundred and five million dollar pump station project. That's one out of three projects they have on the list. You know, a hundred and five million buys, you know, fifty of our water plants. So there's still room for communities of this size to get in there. Another common one you'll hear about is USDA Rural Development. Their office is right by ours on Lafayette. They have thirty-eight year loan terms. They do have a loan and grant combination options. Their interest rates right now are a little bit higher, three point three seven five intermediate. They have poverty intermediate on market, you qualify for intermediate. If your median household income would have been, I think a hundred dollars lower than that, you would have qualified for poverty rate. And you're at the, you're at the limb of the census. Whoever decides to submit their numbers, that's how it shakes out. And if you do get poverty retro, you have to have a documented health threat. We could probably generate a health threat, but it's not as bad as, let's say, something falling over, you know, something falling apart. So because it looks like EPA is one of the more favorable positions for you right now, we'll use that to continue the conversation. At the standard terms, let's think in terms of a million dollars, cause the math's easy for me to add up. At standard terms, we go down through the terms we talked about. No principal forgiveness. When I say ten percent coverage, I'm saying when you have these debts, they require you to put so much back in coverage and make sure you can make a year's payment. So all that's in there. Split between fifteen hundred water customers equally. And we know not all customers are equal. You might have a bulk customer, you might have a residence, fixed income. So let's just balance them equal for tonight. Average cost per customer per month, if you had to raise rates just to match that, would be about four bucks. But since you qualify for the small community rate at one point six eight eight percent. And we'll just say seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in principal forgiveness, run that on down the road. A million dollars worth is gonna cost you about a buck a customer. So you can think, well, we have a two million dollar project, you know, a couple of dollars per customer. But if you start adding up after that, then you max out on your principal forgiveness, so.
There is a limit.
Okay, this violates the rule, two million dollars on a page, but let's go through it real slow here. So I use three and a half million as a project cost. Kind of a bookend or kinda in the middle of the bookends. And then as we go across, principal forgiveness changes. No principal forgiveness, half a million, million, one and a half. And then we go to, oh yeah, EPA also allows you to request for thirty-year term rather than twenty. Now, I don't wanna pay ten years on a five-year term. I mean, it's kinda that theory. So it really stinks to be paying on year fourteen if you're replacing a computer ten years. So we're not really thinking about what we're doing here. But if I'm building a brand new distribution system, a pipe that's gonna be a hundred years in the ground, I don't mind paying thirty years on it. And some argue that, hey, those people in year twenty-eight that's gonna live here need to pay some of this. We don't, we shouldn't have to all pay it now. So there's different ways to look at it. So as we go down through here in the terms, no principal forgiveness. At three and a half million dollar project would be about thirteen dollars per customer per month. As we go higher in principal forgiveness, the cost per customer per month goes down. Best case scenario, at the twenty-year note, one and a half million principal forgiveness, about seven fifty per customer per month. If you apply to equal to everyone. A lot of communities say, well, you know, I'm not sure that's how our rates really need to be structured. I mean, I think you're looking at that, your rates right now anyway. But maybe we think about the number of people on fixed income and how these rates might affect them as in our businesses.
Labor drive.
What's that?
Labor drive.
Yeah, yeah. The type of customers you have really does determine, I think, how you wanna, how you wanna set your rates. But it is up to the village board. All the EPA cares about is that you're gonna be able to generate a dedicated source revenue. They wanna know that you can pay that loan and how are you gonna do it? And this is how you're gonna do it. You're gonna adjust the rates by your water rate ordinances and that to get it done. Let's say, well, we really don't like this, this is too much. Can we go thirty years? What happens to us? At zero principal forgiveness, it's about nine forty-two per customer per month. One and a half million on thirty years, you're down to, you know, five forty or so. Doesn't feel too bad. Let's think about the bottom here real quick, total loan payback. How much are we gonna pay over the life of this thing? In our worst case scenario, about four point seven million. In our best case scenario, about two point six eight. And if that, well, if we go thirty, you'd think that would, you know, really ramp up our, our total payback, but it only only takes it to about two point nine. So that's, you know, it, it's not, the math kinda makes it pretty easy. The most free money we can get, the better off we are. I mean, that always makes sense, right? And in this case, it. But I wanna show you the different principal forgiveness's because as you go along through a project, odds are it's gonna change. The interest rate's probably gonna change a little bit, principal forgiveness might change a little bit. But right now, you'd be right here. And if, if your total project's less, of course, that goes down. When would you have to have the revenue generated? You start repayment on loans with EPA six months after initiation of operation. So we'll go through a schedule here in a second. We were talking a few years from now, would you have to be doing that? Couple of years.
John, what did our last deal cost us? What did the point cost us?
I think we were around between two point eight and three point two, I believe.
Yeah.
We paid it off early.
Yeah, you guys paid it off that early.
We paid it off in, we paid it off in like twelve years.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
It was a twenty, it was a twenty year, twenty year note, we paid it off in twelve.
So if we wanted to do this, where in the world do we start? Step one, facility plan, any property easements, things like that. But really the facility planning and the hydraulics are the two biggest things. Facility planning's done by your engineers in conjunction with, of course, the village board. But that, that gets you kinda through the first thirty percent of conceptual design. And the facility plan is your working document that EPA has to have, that they'll approve in order to give you the loan. Step two is you get a design and plan, specs, permits, all that fun stuff. These two trains might leave the station at the same time if we're trying to get to the funding quickly. We probably wanna get into the planning, develop what the answer is, answer some of these, where in the world does the tank need to go? How big's it need to be? And then start with design. Step three, you do all this in order to get ready to, to bid. In order to get the loan agreement, you have to get the planning approved, all your funding applications approved. And be ready to bid. But you actually have to get the bids in hand before you get the loan agreement. And that's one of the hardest parts about this program is it relies on the faith of the village boards and everybody on the team here to get to that point.
Is there a lot of contractors that do this?
One of them's behind you. And actually, we were just talking about another project that's actually gonna get this one and a half million, gonna advertise your bids in a couple of weeks. They're tough choices. And so what we gotta ask ourselves is, if we're gonna go forward with it, if the terms change, is it still something we're gonna be able to do and wanna do if we, if we don't get the best funding we want? You know, is there a line that says, well, now I can't do it. It's not free, I'm not doing it at all. If that's the case, then we really need to have a conversation about where that need level is. And then step four, of course, construction and operation. One thing we don't wanna forget though, throughout this whole thing, we gotta keep the public involved. You will be required to have public hearings as part of the EPA loan. That's actually required and to accept public comment with a public hearing as part of the planning approval process. And, you know, if we're gonna adjust rates and can't cost people, we need to educate them on why in the world it's happening. And, you know, if we get a good plan developed and educate them, choose the right.
Backing up a little ways, I mean, you're gonna meet with resistance, of course, from village residents if their water bills go up. But would that improve the fire rating by enough to kinda balance it out on what they would save on homeowner's insurance?
We can look at that. I can't guarantee that though, because the, the plant production, as far as like an offset.
Yeah, just to kinda justify.
Probably won't offset that exactly. But, you know, we'd have to look at that. Maybe it'd be a good selling point.
We're at six, I believe now.
Since it's a volunteer department, I doubt very much it's gonna go up to a five because of this.
It, and, and that's why I mentioned earlier, but it could provide the practical benefit of having actually increased fire flow if, if the chance of the fire comes along. Is that the pocketbook? No, you hope you don't have to realize that benefit, right? But if it actually improves the fire flow, then that is the benefit for everyone. And let's see, what are, what's the average? Average bill, we'll say four thousand, five thousand gallons. So for an average bill for, let's say, forty-five hundred gallons or so, what do we say then?
Fifty-five bucks a month.
Not sewer, just water.
No water right now. See, see that's what, that's a misconception. People think our water's so high. Our water is cheaper per month than Jacksonville's is.
Yeah.
Our minimum water bill is ten.
Your water bill is, which is, which is great, but it is the lowest I know of right now.
Yeah, and that's what I've been, I've been saying for years.
But I would say just for water, just for comparison purposes. And this is not just your neighbor's project type thing. You know, this is regionally what I see and then even nationally. I see rates of average bill of five thousand gallons, probably between thirty dollars and fifty-five dollars. With a thirty-five to forty-five is kinda your median number just for water. High ends, probably your fifty-five to sixty-five range. You know, if you talk to our rural water friends, they're, they're way up there.
You're talking water, water only. You know what our water only is?
It's about two thirds of the total bill goes to the sewer and a third goes to water.
But, but what he's getting at is our low, Jacksonville's minimum water, water only is what, fifteen?
I didn't see what it was this year actually.
Fifteen something. Our, our minimum water is ten thirty-six.
I got a house in Jacksonville, I'm renting it, thirty-five bucks a month.
Yeah, as I was saying, average bill, like around thirty-five dollars usually. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm not saying, hey, I've had, let's raise the rates for fun, because we're so low. There needs to be a need, but at least you know comparatively, if you have to do a project, you do have a little bit of room and it could be justifiable adjustment, you know.
You'll have to come talk to my neighbor specifically. I have one neighbor that'll, he's not hate everything we do, but, you know.
It's okay.
He can come to the public.
Well, that's, like you said, that's what, everybody gets the bill and they, they think their water bill.
Yeah, they don't understand it's water.
We're paying Jacksonville to clean our sewer and we're at their mercy.
Right.
We can't help what they charge us. But when you're, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, water to water.
Yeah, I mean, these, these definitely are not easy choices. So as far as, as the schedule goes, that's what folks usually ask us, what I wanna know. Well, if we started today, would it be done?
Yeah.
Right? So if we start today.
As far as you didn't ask.
Yeah. He was, he meant to, but he was young and I'm putting him to sleep.
He swallowed his slice.
So if we started roughly today, over the next few quarters here going into twenty twenty, where we switch over here, we'd be doing facility planning, funding applications. And through this process too, it's not that you go, okay, go do all this stuff and six months later you come back and say, here it is. Like it or not, we're gonna have to have workshops and work through some details together so everybody's on the same page. I think that's how you guys function anyway. So it's, it's a natural thing. Design complete, first quarter next year. Looking to be ready to bid, probably in that March timeframe. Now, this is fast track here. Shooting for a loan agreement in the summer between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure they're gonna have the funding to be able to hit this, but the way the pressure is on the program now and what they're telling me. But I wanted to show you that it probably is possible to be ready for that in case others don't get ready. And then we got about a year plus of construction. So, you know, you're looking at around the end of twenty twenty-one to be ready for operation on the fastest probably track possible. Slightly probably more probable track, we're looking at same items. But if we get in the bypass period with EPA, we'll be pushing the operation into, you know, second, third quarter of twenty twenty-two. If the program's under a lot of pressure, you can see where it pushes us out to. So all of them somewhere between twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. In case we needed to compare it, so I did that, but we've already done it. So what's the village board required to do? The first step would be to authorize facility planning and design. That's the first things that need to go on. You need to have a bit of a goal on, you know, what we're trying to look at. If it's just tank and scada, let's say, it can be a bit of a focused effort, which streamlines it a little bit. Step two, as we talked a second ago, there'd be some design decisions. And as we go, we'll have debt authorizing ordinances. You'll have to pass some ordinances in order to take on that debt, should that be the right choice for you. Loan documents, things like that as we go and then the public hearings. And then, once we get out to around this range, the, the village board will authorize the bidding. And then, once we get bids, you'll accept the bids right in here and then submit the whole package to EPA in order to try to get your loan agreement. Once you have the loan agreement in place, then you're able to issue the notes to proceed for construction and off you go. We're off like a herd of turtles at that point. Now, key thing on cash here. You don't have money from your loan agreement until, from EPA until this point. Costs up to this point are gonna have to come out of cash somewhere or some other source. Now, once you get your loan, you can ask for reimbursement on, on these items and you can reimburse back into your account. So it's more of a cash flow. Should you choose to wanna fund, you know, development costs with, with village dollars and not ask for reimbursement to keep the loan down, that's fine.
We, we talked about pulling money out of our coffers for part of this anyway, not borrowing the whole amount. So, I mean.
Sure.
About how much would you be looking at up to that point?
That would be the non-construction cost, which is around, was it a half? Probably between four hundred and fifty thousand and six hundred or so, depending on. Yeah, and the reason why I'm, I'm kinda variable on that, because some of the non-construction costs is construction engineering, which happens after you already have your loan agreement. Yeah. So once you get your loan agreement, then it's a monthly pay request to EPA for contractor, engineer, attorney, whatever. Water purchasing, you gotta buy from someone else. So the cash flow is something that we don't wanna lose sight of.
That's your job, Tiffany.
And it's, it's not all, you know, it's spread out. Pardon me. Over that time period for sure. That's the end. Question?
Dick?
Now, when, when I was there at the building contractor and all that stuff, this is when the state hospital shut down. Little clunk over there. What's it good for, nothing salvage?
Could you ever find the person that would actually sell it to you?
Well, that's one of my big questions. Here's the thing, what we were looking at, and we talked about this just briefly, but utilizing that. Is there a possibility that, is it junk? Is it passed on?
I don't, I don't know the junk, they just rehabbed that thing, what, ten, fifteen years ago?
The bad thing is, there again, even, even with it added to that, it's still not enough storage. Cause it's, it's also a small tank. It's a good question, cause we did check into that. And I, and I even talked to the state about it.
Seems logical.
But it just. But it just, we're still in the same boat. We're, we're still not high enough to change our pressure, plus we still don't have enough on storage.
Right, yeah, 'cause it's a, every time I drive by, I think, like, how can we move that thing?
If I remember right, that's like a three hundred thousand tank, I think.
It's very long, I think.
It's very long, we got, but even at that, but even at that, we're only at five fifty, so we're still under where we need to be.
But if we even hook to ours, I mean, that could feed this and, that would be bad.
And elevation wise, I don't think it's low.
It is, it's not.
It's mild, right?
It's probably twenty feet, thirty.
Which in hydraulic world is, is a big difference.
How much pressure you want to go? Are you, are you shooting for?
I don't know that we've really thrown a number at it yet, um.
We've probably looked at least, we'd probably evaluate five to ten psi.
Yeah, I would say if we did five to seven and a half, I'd be happy.
Yeah.
Because that would boost us up enough that the third floor at least would be somewhat easier.
And the entire system?
Everybody in the system, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still looking at maybe sixty pounds at our houses versus fifty-five right now. There again, depending on where you had elevation. Like, I have really good water pressure at home, but we're, we're lower. Um, the shed, our shed down there has greater pressure than anybody in the village, which is where the bottom of the hill. Whereas you go up on Victoria Lane, they're up, they got a little less. But I guess my point is, at the very most in the village, it wouldn't hurt anybody. It wouldn't be high enough to hurt anyone.
Victoria Lane, and we actually gave money to the homeowners to put in their own pump system.
Booster pumps.
Booster pumps, 'cause they, they had their water.
Looked at, but, we talked about pressure zones earlier, we even looked at making it its own pressure zone with a little hydrodynamic tank where you pressurize a smaller tank, but really helping them out in the business was the most cost-effective way to do it, yeah.
And if they had to, they could do that out to hotels, but it's, lose the room.
Right, Jason, you got a question?
Yeah, when you were saying earlier that we qualify for the small, in other words, we're in that.
Small community?
Community. Are we anywhere close of going to the next step up?
No, I am.
So what I seen was the loan doesn't, until third quarter of two thousand twenty-one, so let's say we go up two hundred and fifty, you know, people or whatever. Are we that close that that qualification will go away, or?
Great question. A disadvantaged community, I have a, put a definition on here, about a third of the way down. I forgot it was on there, did you ask me that? As of this year, let's say, a local government unit that qualifies for either the small community rate or service population less than twenty-five thousand.
No, sorry.
Okay, so we're, we're.
That's what you gotta think, though, because like the USDA median household income, you're a hundred bucks away from poverty rate. Next census or whatever the numbers change, you could change again. You could actually change for the worse, you never know.
John and I have been through this, but one of the most important things we're going to have happen to us in the next year is the census. Because if you don't have the census correct, you're done. It, it costs you so much money, it just, you can't believe.
Right.
And how much stuff is based on the census.
Yep, I see it all the time. It, you know, on the bottom of this sheet is Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. I didn't really get into that one much, but that's a, a half million dollar, all grant program. It's all for construction. So if you have design and stuff, you gotta pick right out of your own dollars, but you have to be at least fifty-one percent low to moderate income households, and you're at thirty-two point one-two. Really, you're not even close on that one. But I've seen some communities that I would swear were seventy-five percent that were forty percent by census. It couldn't be, it can't be right. I mean, it just can't be right.
I have a real problem with that because we have so many older people here and fixed incomes and all that.
And sometimes, though, those folks don't wanna respond to the census.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and income surveys, they don't wanna do income surveys either, but that's the people needing the most.
Well, it's people like Dick that make so much that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's, hell, I, I wouldn't even venture to guess where it is over in the labor drive, twenty thousand, twenty-five a year, maybe.
I'm curious on their response rate on, like, the census, you know, I mean.
Probably not very good.
It's tough, I, you know, no doubt about it.
So you wanna check the minor one?
Well, guys, like I said, when we started this, for sake of time tonight, this is gonna be one of many meetings, so I, I wanted you to, to know what we're looking at, what he had come up with for us, the pay options, the, the debt forgiveness options, worst case, best case. But it's something we have really got to stay on if we're gonna do it, because, like you said, who knows how long that program will be there. And this is, whether it happens now or five years from now, we are gonna have to have it. I mean, it's gonna get to the point where the EPA's not gonna say, you're interconnected with the city, still good. They're gonna say, you're gonna do it. And, you know, pay me now or pay me later. I tried to get, well, say, previous administration to do this a long time ago, and they wouldn't do it. Well, if we had, we'd done it ten years ago, it wouldn't have been there this cost. Now, granted, we may not have had the deal that we're getting now, too. I'm not saying that, but it's just, it's, it's only gonna go up in cost every year that it's put out.
Yeah, and, and some things that are affecting the cost recently, too, are like, uh, American Iron and, and Steel Act, you know, that's causing a little bit of increase, although most of the manufacturers are kinda getting up to steam on that. Right at first, we had a hard time with valves and fittings and stuff, just their domestic yards weren't ready for that type of, uh, influx of need, but now everybody's doing pretty good. But it, it, it's a bit of a cost, no doubt about it. So if, and, and I don't wanna, not trying to pressure you guys, but if, you know, you know what the terms are now. So if you decide in the near future that, you know, you do need to move forward with something, at least getting the facility planning going is the first basic step. It's also one of the least costly steps, and I say at least costly, we're still talking some dollars. Facility plan usually costs about twenty-five thousand or so, and the reason why is about thirty percent, uh, you get it to about thirty percent conceptual design. In this case, we're gonna be building a hydraulic model, doing a lot of detail and sort of pre-design work as part of that. But we can use, I was looking back at the old facility plan, we can use a lot of that old upfront stuff, upfront half of it, so we're probably looking at about eighteen thousand a year or so.
So going back to the first question, if I had, you're gonna fill this five hundred thousand gallon tank, do we need to dig another well? Do we need to expand our treatment plant down there with another ninety, or ten thousand, I wonder what that would be?
No, because if you think, if you think about it, we're not gonna be producing any more water from the plant this way than we are now. We're just, once you get it full, you're still running the same gallons we are today regardless.
Thing's just a little slower.
You're just putting it in two tanks instead of running one up and down, nothing down, to that time.
Yeah, so the one that, and just go like this during the day and that during the night. However, if we see a lot of expansion, we see much home building, we see, you know, or a high demand user, like a factory or something, and that four hundred thousand a day goes up to seven hundred, we probably will need to address that.
Our water plant is capable of producing seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day.
Twenty-four seven, huh?
Twenty-four seven, the way it is right now, it is stubbed to have a third pump in there.
Right.
So that's set to do now, with two wells, been able to rotate them, I can't see having to have three wells. I mean, you can rotate back and forth. I mean, yeah, in the long future, when, if we really expand it, yes.
If your demand starts going up, then that question becomes, it goes up to the top, um, quickly, yeah.
But, but like right now, I mean, we're running our wells at five hundred and twenty-five gallon a minute. I can run them at seven hundred gallon a minute to the point.
He can crank out more just with what you got.
Oh, yeah, they're, the capability is there.
And the other thing I remember, too, is, you know, we may have more use at the hotels or some other areas, but every time somebody replaces a toilet, it goes from like a two point six to a one point whatever.
Right.
You know, and there, all the high efficiency stuff is just sort of, instead of increasing things, just kinda keeping them and maybe even reducing some of the average, uh, sales. So it's not necessarily just a flat line, you know, up in the air. It's actually sort of neutral.
I don't look for a lot of changes in the government for the next year because of somebody trying to get re-elected. Whoever, I don't care, and getting elected, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna jack these programs because this is what they're gonna base on.
I think through twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one even, I think these terms are gonna stay, based on what, I'm talking to EPA and stuff. Um, it's after that. The other thing we gotta remember, too, is, you know, Capitol bill with the state, I'm sure, uh, those presidents, some others have been in contact with their representatives. Your facility plan will help you be ready for that, so it's another good thing to have ready to go is a, is a plan on hand. And then, you know, if they ever do anything with infrastructure at the Fed level, odds are it's gonna be channeled through these programs. Because they already have it in place, they can get the money going quickly. That's just usually how it happens.
So how long's step one take? If we decide we wanna move, step one, how long?
About fastest, about three months, usually closer to six.
And you need the money at the end of?
Yeah, progress, progress, it'd be, yeah.
So high end?
Usually the last three months, usually, once we get over product.
Twenty-five thousand, you said, high end?
Yeah, I'd say eighteen in this case, so I think I can use some stuff from the previous facility plan, so that investment you already made is actually gonna.
So what's that look like for us, Tiffany? I mean, we're going into budgets, so that would be, I'm thinking just that'd be a really good time.
What, what you need to remember is this is water, water revenues, which is restricted to water, and my accounts are good.
So that's what I'm wondering, can we?
Once it's appropriated.
You're good for the eighteen. I'm not gonna say without looking into the books that you're good for six hundred and fifty thousand. Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about phase one that Jamie's suggesting we need.
But Tiffany's actually right, though, and, and it's probably, you know, four to five hundred thousand, because if we wanna, if we wanna act fast,
Oh, yeah, 'cause it's correct.
Then we gotta get the silly plan going. I would say after about three months, we're gonna be able to have some of these answers, and then we probably wanna get authorized for design so we can knock that out quick and get to bidding.
Well, and a big part of that's gonna depend on where you place it, too.
I'm sorry, what was that?
If you, if you do decide that the law's placement is a good place, then we're eligible to use Tiff money for that.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
So, a lot of that's gonna depend on, um, I've gotta look and see exactly what we have in water sewer and then also what the board's, that's part of why I keep saying, please make a plan for Tiff, because, um, you can use it for infrastructure, um, along that.
If it's there.
If it's there.
Right.
Um, so.
That's why I'm thinking we should start the conversation of step one, but I don't, I don't know. That's where I'm thinking.
I, I, I'm leading with John, that even if it comes from water sewer, you're looking at closing CDs, that kind of stuff, and making up any difference with general, but I think we would be okay, um.
How quick do you do repossession?
Yeah, yeah, how long will they, when they come taking it out, take it back?
Postdating a check, yeah.
Can we just write, Tiffany, could you write that check tonight?
And just change the name on the side and run a new check.
Guys, I, I say it, it's been a long night. I know, he's tired, too. He's been over beginning. At least you've got a concept of what we're looking at here. Let's, let's, us get back together again.
Get some numbers.
Quickly, and sit down, and we can talk about it, so he's not here, and like I said, it's ten fifteen.
'Cause let's start, I'm just thinking, start in little pieces, and you said step one's gotta be first.
The lowest, lowest risk is the silly plan. I tell you, the big step is the designer.
Okay.
That's, that's the chunk of change that's in mind. If we do that, it's hard to break back.
I don't like guessing with numbers, though. I like giving you a solid, you know what I mean, like? I don't mean from you, I mean, like, from me to be able to say.
'Cause then she presents it to us, yeah.
So love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You actually made that one, I gotta understand.
I know, one little.
Guys, hey, I get these guys to try it in.
I don't know, uh, you guys approved a Jacksonville high school post prom, four hundred dollars, the very next day. Uh, and we had just got a, um, generic letter for that, but then the very next day, she emailed me a one specifically to me, um, asking for five hundred.
Jeanette Barlow?
Yeah, so I told her that the four hundred had been approved, that's already been mailed out. If you guys wanna vote to give her another hundred, or if you wanna keep that on for next year.
What's the, what did she want the other hundred for?
Um, she, well, she didn't ask for another hundred, she asked for five hundred to purchase an Apple Watch. So I told her that we had sent out four hundred, which we've already sent.
Yeah, they are expensive.
What, what do they mean, Apple Watch?
'Cause it's to get kids to go to the after prom.
It's like a, like a raffle.
Some kind of incentive, because then they won't be out drinking and having havoc.
So I told her, I'll take it to the board if you wanna vote to give her another hundred.
I'm fine with another hundred.
So I'll keep it in mind next year. It's up to you guys.
Well, and then tell her next year, present it all at once, you know?
Right, well, she did present it once. I'm thinking she talked to somebody, because then the next day.
Yeah, 'cause then they try to get them to come to JHS instead of going out and drinking, and, and we have a lot of JHS students.
Yeah, I'll put another, I'll put that on the.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Well, then I'll tell you what, prom is actually freaking, I think, or next weekend.
So do they need it quicker?
Very, very okay with that.
Can I go ahead and just discuss it?
We'll put that next up, that's fine.
You know, I mean, like, it's not gonna be a good after.
And we already approved it, you guys are okay with it.
One, one quick thing under new business, then, uh, you guys, we all have, uh, new meat emails, uh, Tiffany will have passwords or whatnot, how to change those. And then for the new trustees, just give me your preferences on what committees you'd like to serve on sometime between now and next Thursday.
I, I meant to mention, and we have so much going on, I, I wanna be able to put on, if we have time between now and next week's board meeting, I wanna get a resolution to sell that, the old dump truck.
Yes, we can do that.
So I just wanted to buy, the old, that old one ton, the red one that got damaged frame, and we've had forever, so.
Resolution to sell.
Or we can organize to buy a resolution to sell.
Anyway.
So, you sell by ordinance, you buy by resolution.
Okay, okay, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure we could get that on the agenda, on, on an action item, thank you.
Didn't we say so? Was that how we were gonna?
I don't remember, I think so.
I think you sell by ordinance and you buy by resolution, I think.
Uh, okay, um.
We oughta have a little cake or anything for term or something on.
I, I figured we did get something, something.
I mean, someone got the key to the city, so what the hell?
I figured for all, and all three of them that they're gonna be here, we'd just get some cupcakes or something.
Yeah.
If you get in the coach car, let him drive him down. Here he asks for.
Vote to the jury.
Vote to a jury!
Second.
Get the hell out of here.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
My vote is killing me.